Good evening and welcome to the December fifteenth meeting of the Town Council. If you'll kindly rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. For announcements, I just have our upcoming meetings Thursday, January fifth at six thirty. We do have a budget meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Thursday, January twelfth is a regular meeting at seven P M. And Wednesday, January eighteenth is a regular meeting at six thirty P M. Paul, do you have anything?
Good night. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to say we did get the two thousand twenty-three calendars as requested. I just want to read this statement. I have a message from the police chief, Brian Levesque, with regards to the issue of school bus violations. The Merrimack Police Department puts the utmost importance in issues related to traffic safety, including school bus violations. Each and every year, each and every year, as well as every school bus complaint, which is brought to the attention, is investigated by our officers. And when charges are warranted, they are filed and prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. We have also worked closely with the bus company for years to ensure safety of the students. Some of these efforts to improve safety, which include but are not limited to bus stop location studies, traffic enforcement details, and unmarked patrol vehicles and electric signage. Residents, especially parents and children riding buses, should know that we are fully committed to continuing this relationship and the safety of our children. I have scheduled a meeting with Bill Everett, Matt Chevanel, the police chief, the person in charge of the buses. We're going to be meeting over the next couple of days, probably next couple of weeks, to go over these issues and try to rectify some of the problems that we're having with this. Once again, school bus safety and our children are the number one priority with it. We've also ran, I had media start running the lines. You know, we did that P S A about school buses. So they are running that again on the network TV. We're pushing that out to Facebook and we're also pushing it out to YouTube about the P S A that we did with school buses back earlier this year in September, just to remind people of the rules and regulations surrounding a school bus. So just know that we're working on it with that. The other thing I do want to mention is that I did bring this over. Chuck Mower, and I didn't do it last time, I was remiss, but Chuck Mower built this grist mill. Grist mill cover bridge, the grist mill bridge, covered bridge. This is a mailbox cover and he built it. And he's still looking for donations for the grist mill and is working on that. Matt Casperius, I know he's here. We have a meeting scheduled sometime in January, right? Sometime in January to go over the options. But for everybody out there, that the grist mill is still an active project in the town of Merrimack for the two seventy-fifth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody have anything further under announcements? What I'd like to do, well, first we'll go comments from the press and public. If you'd like to address council, you can feel free to come to the table here or stand at the mic over there. Yes, I am. All right, there's no recognitions, resignations, or retirements. And what I'd like to do before we, oh, go ahead, sorry.
There is one recognition.
Okay, no, I knew that. I was actually seeing this different line. I apologize. Thank you, Paul. Before I get to that recognition, if I could, I'd like to, just the Wreaths Across America was an added item on our agenda and it was at the end. I'd like to do it now without objection at the council. Is that okay?
It's up to you.
Yeah, well, all right. It's up to the council. Nancy, would you like to speak to that? And we have a proclamation here for this evening.
As many of you know, as many of you know, Wreaths Across America seeks to remember the fallen, honor those who served, and teach our children the value of freedom. On December seventeenth at twelve noon, a Wreaths Across America event will be held to remember and honor our deceased veterans at Last Rest Cemetery at Seven Hillside Terrace in Merrimack. This local event emulates and is inspired by the Arlington National Cemetery Wreaths Across America project. The event will include the laying of remembrance wreaths on the graves of our country's fallen heroes and the act of saying the name of each and every one as the wreaths are placed. A refreshment reception will follow downstairs after the ceremony, which should only be about fifteen minutes. It'll be fairly short. And there'll be a reception with refreshments sponsored by Franklin Savings Bank and the Knights of Columbus from Our Lady of Mercy Church downstairs at Our Lady of Mercy immediately following the ceremony. The Girl Scouts will also be there to help. This, our local group has been, was founded by and spearheaded by Jennifer D. Felice. And there's a volunteer committee that has spearheaded this last year and again this year. Over the past several months, the Merrimack community has joined together to make this event happen and sponsored enough wreaths. I think we sponsored over six hundred and fifty to place one at the gravesite of each veteran buried at all of the cemeteries in Merrimack. Last year we did it, but it was just at Last Rest Cemetery. So the goal was to be able to recognize every veteran buried here in Merrimack. So we want to say thank you to everybody that has sponsored wreaths. It's been a coming together of the community and invite everybody to come. And we would love to see you on Saturday.
Great. And I have a proclamation here on behalf of the Town Council. It's National Wreaths Across America Day, December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. It reads, whereas the national nonprofit organization Wreaths Across America was founded in two thousand and seven and coordinates wreath laying ceremonies at Arlington National Cemetery, as well as at more than three thousand four hundred additional locations in all fifty states, at sea and abroad. And whereas the mission of Wreaths Across America is to remember the fallen, honor those who serve, and teach our children the value of freedom. And whereas Wreaths Across America has chosen "Find a Way" to serve as its two thousand twenty-two theme, to encourage youth to get involved in their own communities and, excuse me, to serve in even small ways that can make big impacts. And whereas Wreaths Across America is made up of more than two thousand two hundred participating locations across the country run by dedicated volunteers looking to share the mission of to remember, honor, teach through annual wreath laying ceremonies each December and awareness and education events throughout the year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the Town Council of the Town of Merrimack, hereby proclaim December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two as National Wreaths Across America Day in the Town of Merrimack, New Hampshire, and extend our thanks and appreciation to our veterans for their service and sacrifice and to Wreaths Across America for bringing this honor to our community. Proclaim this fifteenth day of December, two thousand twenty-two by the Merrimack Town Council. Do we need a motion on that?
Some more.
A motion by Barbara?
Second.
Seconded by Nancy. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, or abstained. It's six zero zero. And one thing I just noticed, I didn't let you know that Tom Kane is excused from this evening's meeting. Thank you, everybody. And thanks, Nancy. All right. Next on the agenda is recognitions, which I knew was a recognition for Bob Galimo. He's here this evening. We do have a few people that were to be recognized. And I'll give you that list real quick. With the Fire and Rescue Department, we had Richard Gagny, twenty-five years. Carol Miner was with twenty years. In the Police Department, we had Kenneth McLeod with ten years, Erica Maguire with twenty years. Public Works, we have Wayne Lombard with twenty-five years, Ian Robinson with twenty years, and David Blaine with thirty-five years. And here this evening is Robert Galimo with twenty years. He was my wreath guy for years. I know that. But if, Robert, you can come up here and Laurie, if you want to join him, join us as well.
Hi, Lori Barrett, Operations Manager at the Highway Division. Bob was hired in December twenty-second, two thousand two as a recycle attendant and was quickly promoted in April, two thousand and three to the Equipment Operator One in the Highway Division of Public Works. Bob's willingness to learn new processes and equipment has not only been beneficial to his personal development, but also to the town as a whole. Bob has become a well-rounded employee and has been responsible for many differing operations throughout the years, from operating the bucket truck, sidewalk tractors, breaking through the beaver dams, to snow plowing. I know that's his favorite. Bob takes great pride in his plow route and that couldn't be more evident. Each year, we receive positive feedback from the residents on his route, who truly appreciate the efforts he puts in to ensure a safe commute for them all. Bob can be counted on to respond to emergency calls at all hours, and this has not gone unnoticed and is very much appreciated. Sorry, have a cold. He's often one of the first employees to respond for our winter storms. He can always be counted on to drop everything and come in for emergencies. He's a versatile individual who is an asset to the department and has the knowledge and experience to educate the newer employees. He's often assigned to tasks because he has a variety of skills that are beneficial to many of the projects that the Highway Division is tasked with. When not at work, he enjoys hobbies, including gardening, hiking, and hunting. Thank you for the venison. And he's also been involved with the Scouts. Bob has also achieved the status of Master Road Scholar from the U N H T squared program. Bob, for the past twenty years, you've been a great member of this organization, serving in various projects. Your time and dedication to the town and the mission are appreciated. You're always willing to help where it's needed in addition to doing your job. So thanks again and congratulations.
Whenever there's a blizzard, if I can get out of my driveway, I try and go down to the highway garage to see the guys and see how everything's going. And I think he lives there. They're always a great crew because they come in and they don't leave till the project's complete. When the storm's over, it could be two days later. And Bob is always there as well. He, his son was involved in Boy Scout, which he participated in. And I would always see him once a year for that big wreath. Now I get somebody to hang it up, so I don't have to do it. So I don't have the fire department coming to my house to bail me out. But Bob, this is a plaque from the council. It's recognizing twenty years of service presented to Robert Galimo in recognition of twenty years of service as a full-time employee of the Town of Merrimack Highway Division of the Public Works Department. It is a pleasure to present you with the plaque. We wish to extend our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance and dedication to duty December twenty-second, two thousand and two to December twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, presented on behalf of the Town Council and the Town Manager. Thanks again. All righty, moving on. Under appointments, we have the councils to be presented with the details of the engineering study formed on the wire road, U S Route Three intersection, and roadway safety improvements. And Kyle, I thought I said, Kyle's here.
I'll just give a quick overview. He gets his picture taken with Bob. We have started a study. The engineers have met with a group of residents down there to come up with a conceptual design of the Route Three Wire Road intersection. We have, I have received, and I'm sure the council has received numerous emails over the last twenty-four hours on opinions from a public. Tonight, we're here, we're here to hear from our engineering firms who conducted the study and present to the Town Council the overall plan, which they feel is best for that location. As you'll know, this is all part of the Wire Road Route Three intersection, as well as the bridge project that will be coming forward as well. But all we're doing tonight is talking about the Wire Road Intersection Project.
Thank you, Paul, and good evening, Town Council. I'm happy to be here tonight to present this project that we've been working on for quite a while now. And it's been a concept for even longer than that. I think it was a concept back in the early two thousands, honestly. But anyways, so as Paul said, we're here to talk about the U S Three Wire Road intersection and the corridor to either side of that intersection. With me tonight is our consultant teams from Quantum Construction Consultants. They're the prime consultant for the project. And really, they're managing the overall aspect of the Wire Road part of it. But they're the prime consultant for the bridge project too, which abuts this project. And I'll talk about that a little more in a second. Our subconsultant on the project is Beta Group, and they joined the project team to help specifically with the Wire Road intersection part of the project. With us tonight are Jim Broussard, who's sitting to my left. Other project members here tonight are Anna Geraldi from Quantum, John Byatt, and Dennis Flynn from Beta. And Chris Turgeon unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight, but he's the project manager for the project. So this project really got into gear back in two thousand and seventeen working with our friends at Nashville Regional Planning Commission. We had expressed an interest on the behalf of the town to have a safety improvement project for this intersection. And the Planning Commission was able to rank the project in their scoring system and dedicate some of their federal allotment of funds that they get each year for the region towards this project. So that's how the project really got kickstarted in two thousand and seventeen, and it was added to the state tenure plan. Fast forward a few years and it, you know, it continues moving up the chain of the tenure plan. The project will be an eighty-twenty split. Federal Highway is picking up eighty percent of the funding and the town will contribute the other twenty percent of the project. And that includes all of the design, any easement acquisition that has to occur, and construction costs and construction inspection costs as well. As you may recall from past presentations, this project was originally scheduled for construction in two thousand and twenty-seven. But working with D O T over the past year or so and understanding the relationship between the bridge project and this project and the overlap of the two projects, it just didn't make sense to construct the bridge in two thousand and twenty-five, then come back and tear up part of the approach that was reconstructed for the bridge as part of the Wire Road project. So the two projects were combined, and that's how we formed our team, and that's how we're moving forward. The great part about it is combining the two projects. It'll be a bigger overall project, but it'll save in construction cost and certainly in user delays. It'll be a much shorter construction period. It won't be multiple construction periods. So there's just a slew of benefits to combining the projects. So anytime we work through a federal funded project, we have to follow a fairly strict process to be able to get the funds. So I'll kind of talk through that process. So as I mentioned, the beginning of this project was the request the Regional Planning Commission to have it included as one of their projects. And it ranked high enough in their project need to be a suggested project. And it got into the tenure plan in seventeen, and then we got kicked off. Following that, we got official approval from D O T to proceed with the consultant selection on the project. And we went through what's called a qualifications-based selection process for a consultant. And through that process, we identified Quantum to be the lead consultant for the project. A month or two ago, we held a public hearing as the first phase of the official kickoff of the project. And we held that in this room. Unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of attendees. But we did get some communication outside of the meeting from Abutters, which really helped to shape what our teams put together for you guys tonight. And the purpose of that first meeting was to get that kind of input from the public, from historic folks, from, you know, anyone in the community, all stakeholders, that can help shape where the project goes. So our consultants take all of that information over the past couple of months and work it through the different alternatives that were identified for the project, and ultimately resulting in the engineering study, which is what we're presenting tonight, is the results of the engineering study. This kind of caps off the preliminary part of the project. Following the presentation tonight, assuming the council concurs with the approach that the consultants are recommending to us, we'll communicate with D O T requesting permission to move into the P P S and E phase, which is basically the final design phase, where the more detailed plans for the preferred alternative will be developed into eventually construction plans. And then in twenty-four, twenty-five, we'll bid the project with the bridge project and hopefully construct it in two thousand and twenty-five. The, so this is a quick picture of the project overview area. Basically, it runs from the Daniel Webster and Babusick Lake intersection to just north of the Wire Road Daniel Webster intersection. That's what we're going to focus on with tonight's presentation. But I want everyone to keep in mind that that really isn't the entire scope of the project. Because we're also doing the bridge project, which we've already been through all of this process on, really, the whole, the two projects combined are going to add safety improvements, sidewalks from Babusick Lake Road up to Twin Bridge Road. So it's a more significant project than what you're being presented tonight. But for tonight, we need to focus just on this project. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our project team. And they're going to take us through the project and the recommendations. And at the end, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. So I'm going to cede the chair to Dennis.
Good evening. I'm Jim Broussard with Quantum Construction Consultants. And as Kyle said, we are overseeing the project and Beta is assisting us on this through this. So one of the things we want to talk about is how it got started with the scoping session. And that started with the local concerns meeting we had upfront a while ago to find out what the public was anticipating, what they were looking for. And out of that comes two guiding factors for this whole, the engineering study and the design process. And that's the purpose and need. And this slide is actually the purpose and need as it comes out of the engineering study. And the purpose of the project is to improve safety and traffic operations within the project corridor limits, which Kyle has already talked to you about. The need for the project is to address safety and traffic concerns identified by the community by implementing safety improvements along the corridor and providing a more efficient intersection to improve the flow of traffic along U S Route Three within the project limits. In addition, we are also looking at pedestrian connectivity to, from, as Kyle said, from Babusick Lake up through Wire Road and into the U S Route Three Bridge Replacement Project. And also what Beta is also focusing on is access management for, in the corridor and for signals that start down at C V S, go up through Front Street. So if, if on the preferred alternative, which we'll talk about, signals would be coordinated so you have a uniform flow of movement, if that, you know, under the preferred alternative. But we have two other alternatives to go through. So that, this slide right here becomes our guiding, yeah, there we go, becomes our guide. This slide right here just sort of identifies, it does identify the priority design guidelines that we have to follow, being a D O T federal highway project. We have the Highway Design Manual. We have to use the D O T standard specifications. We also utilize manual on uniform traffic control devices, which governs signals, signage, crosswalks, temporary construction signage. And then we also have the ASHTO, which is the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials, geometric design of highways and streets. That is the guidelines that we follow along with the Town of Merrimack regulations. And of course, with sidewalks, we have Americans' disability. We got to make this, you know, handicap, you know, accessible for all people. So that's sort of just a nutshell of what some of the guidelines are, our primary guidelines that we utilize. Following authorization to go, a detailed survey of the corridor was undertaken by a consultant. Our project corridor is approximately thirteen hundred feet long. The existing right of way is approximately sixty-six feet wide, except for where it gets up to Wire Road. It widens out. The roadway that exists right now is two twelve-to-thirteen-foot lanes with two six-foot shoulders and ten-to-eleven-foot turn lane up at Wire Road. There are limited sightlines for egress coming out of Wire Road. Everybody knows the angle, that's, you know, that severe angle, so coming out, it's hard to see. If you're coming out of Wire Road, your left turn will be a shoulder, it's very hard to see. Church Street intersects the Daniel Webster Highway and is in the area of the pedestrian connectivity study that Beta is also doing. And that intersects, it intersects Daniel Webster at roughly fifteen percent angle, which severely affects how to put sidewalks through there that are ADA compliant, because that exceeds the cross slope that we can have for under ADA, which is two percent. So that becomes an issue. Utilities, of course, you all know the corridor is full of utilities. Area utilities are on the west side. We have water mains, gas mains, drainage, telecommunications, and fiber optics underneath U S Route Three that have to be considered for the project. How are they impacted? What may be required for them to be shifted and go for in there? And then Beta also went out and took a look at all the traffic signal equipment within, you know, within the scope of what they're looking for traffic coordination, got detailed, the original drawings for the, you know, for the signalized intersections for their analytical purposes. At that point, once they had the survey and everything like that, then they start their detailed analysis, and which I turn it over to Dennis now. And he can take you through that.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Jim. As mentioned, Dennis Flynn with Beta. And so just picking up where Jim left off here. So the next, basically, the step in the engineering study process is part of the existing conditions evaluation and assessment is we collected some data. And starting, the starting point for that was traffic volume data. We went out there, had some turning movement counts is what they're called at the intersections taking, taken to, you know, specifically understand what is the, you know, the overall demand, not just at the Wire Road intersection, but we also expanded that to the other locations that Jim just mentioned. C V S right here, Babusick, and then up at Front Street just to, you know, basically do a thorough evaluation, understanding the full sort of demand and operations of the corridor. And as part of that, what we want to see is what we want to understand, typical industry practice is looking at, you know, where is our highest demand? Where is the most critical hour, what we like to call peak hour? You'll, you know, informally hear rush hour utilized. And what we found generally across the corridors, these peak periods or peak hours do coincide with typical commuter. uh, do coincide with, with, with typical commuter, uh, peak periods, which, which is good. You know, you see there in the morning about seven-fifteen to eight-fifteen, and then conversely in the afternoon, uh, five to six. So those are pretty typical standard, uh, peak commuting hours. Uh, we do know we have the school activity here. So sometimes in, in areas like that, what we want to watch out for is, you know, is that driving, uh, you know, driving up the volume maybe in some cases higher than maybe the afternoon rush hour? Uh, that, not the case here, but, um, do have to also be mindful of that school activity for any, any recommendations, improvements, any, uh, decisions we make here. And then also, um, you know, sort of given the area, we have the Merrimack Youth Association nearby. There's the park. Uh, did look at Saturday as well, collected data, um, and nothing too surprising there. Typically on a, you know, Saturday in most areas, you sort of see your highest demand, your highest individual hour being sort of in that midday period. And that certainly was the case here, uh, as you see eleven-fifteen to twelve-fifteen. So, make sure I do this right. Correct. Okay, so, good. So, uh, next piece of data, so moving along, that we wanted to collect and understand was, as you see here on, on the slide, safety analysis. So we, we reached out to the town to, um, get some feedback, get some information, some data on, on, on safety, specifically crashes. And, uh, we focused our attention primarily on the Wire Road, uh, the project location, the Wire Road, uh, intersection. And, uh, what we typically like to do here is, you know, it's just historical, um, data and information. So, uh, you want to go back a few years. In this case, we went back about five. That's starting to become more and more the standard. So extend that time period, uh, going back a good five years. You go beyond that, you're starting to get a little outside a, a good, good set of data. And you go too short, you're maybe going to be potentially missing something that, that's critical. Um, and what that data revealed for us is, uh, overall number of crashes in that timeframe, uh, about five and a half years, we'll call it, was ten. So essentially less than two a year. Uh, most of those, uh, about seven of ten were rear-end crashes. Uh, we did notice, or we did hear that there was one that was involved, uh, a vehicle striking a bicycle. A little bit more information there was a situation where I think the, the bicycle just, just sort of darted out, uh, the motors was not, um, did not have enough time to react and, and, and stop. So that, you know, sort of was just a, uh, difficult situation there. There was a little bit of, uh, weather contributing. And, um, I think in, in this case, it was, uh, probably some icy road, uh, slick conditions. Uh, probably the, the good news, the best takeaway, um, because it's, it's very difficult to have zero crashes in any location regardless of the situation. Uh, but, uh, no injuries reported for, for any of the crashes, strictly just property damage. Um, and that's, that's, uh, that, that's sort of the best case scenario when, um, you're talking about safety is one, low number. And two, the severity of the crashes are also, uh, not significant. Um, and, and that's not too surprising when, you know, you look and see the data is, uh, basically telling us that most of them are rear-end. Uh, nobody likes to get into a collision. Um, rear ends can be very inconvenient, but in, in terms of safety and significance, they are, tend to be, they do tend to be the, the safer of the collisions, usually not resulting in injuries. Um, so, with that. So, taking that information, uh, the next step in the process was to do what was called, uh, you know, basically was referred to as an intersection operations analysis. So, uh, what that basically means here is the, the industry standard for measuring operations is referred to level service, where we essentially assign, uh, a grade letter, uh, very similar to, I'll call it a report card, uh, A through F, except in this case, we have E. Uh, and in the, the level service, uh, for this, uh, you know, for intersections or these types of facilities is, is based on intersection delay. And really what it is, is just essentially a qualitative assessment, uh, to measure the effectiveness or how well a facility, in this case, intersections are operating. Uh, and a couple of takeaways, uh, from that, um, is what we see here. Well, let me, before I get to that, to essentially when you're talking about level service A, uh, just, just kind of, kind of describe that a little bit better. That's, that's, that's low delay, uh, pretty free flow, uh, you know, pretty good range of motion, you know, limited, limited restrictions, all the way through level service F, which, um, we basically described as, as failure. That's sort of what you just have, very high delay, very unreliable, uh, conditions. Not a lot, you know, you can't really, driver expectation is, is not, is not very good. Uh, if you're going through a signalized intersection, you may not really have a good sense of, you know, how many light cycles it may take for you to, for you to get through. That's, that's typically what a level service F condition. Uh, and just a, a note there, level service E is typically, um, referred to as, uh, an intersection that's at capacity. Um, a, a visual I like to use, it's not necessarily, uh, you know, specific to an intersection. It's very easy to kind of visualize is you just think of a cup of water that's, you know, filled to the top. That's, that's the capacity of a cup. Or, you know, another idea is a pipe that's trying to process water. You know, the minute it can no longer handle all the water going through and it starts kind of spilling out, that's, that's, that's the moment when it crosses over from its capacity to, to failing. And that's, that's kind of the, the best way I like to describe it for intersection. A little different way, uh, a little different, um, to visualize that. But that's, that's essentially a good, a good, um, you know, good, good way to kind of, uh, look at it. So, um, some takeaways there from this analysis about Busick Lake Road right here. So we were about level service D, um, you know, that was during Saturday peak hour. And, you know, level service D is typically referred to as an acceptable level service. We're below the capacity level. We do have, uh, you know, maybe slower, uh, movement through the intersection, uh, some, some delay there, but it's still, you know, reliable intersection. It's operating effectively. Uh, and then really, uh, across the corridor, um, every, every other time period, we're seeing level of service C or better, which is a, which is a good level service. Uh, and there's just a couple there with Wire Road, um, again, during all time periods, AM, PM and Saturday, level service C. And, uh, Merrimack Youth Association, not necessarily maybe too surprising, it's unsignalized on the intersection. So folks do have to wait for, um, you know, a reasonable gap before proceeding out onto Route Three from the, from the, from the driveway. And that was a level service E. So, um, you know, and that was during Saturday. We do understand there's, you know, events, most of their events, uh, could take place, uh, then. But that also probably could incorporate, um, park users, uh, coming out as well. And that was during that, um, just to clarify, during that eleven-fifteen to twelve-fifteen period. Okay. So, continuing along with the steps in, in the study. So when we are considering potential improvements, recommendations, modifications, um, one area we look at is, you know, assessing or trying to evaluate, does it, uh, is it appropriate or reasonable to, uh, install a traffic control signal, uh, at this location based on, you know, the, the evaluation, the data we collected and the analysis. And what we utilize for that, uh, going back to what Jim mentioned a few slides ago, is the manual on uniform traffic control devices. Is a federal manual that is largely adopted by the state and local, uh, authorities and officials to potentially assess, you know, this, this, this condition. And what, uh, the MUTCD includes is, uh, a series of warrants, uh, that you would utilize and has, uh, some criteria in there to basically, uh, determine whether it's appropriate to consider traffic control signalization as, um, as, as, you know, if a location, I'd say it this way, as if a location, uh, warrants or it's appropriate to include traffic control signalization. Um, she'll point out, you know, the MUTD, MUTCD does make very clear that this is not a mandate. If you do satisfy these warrants, it's not a, a requirement to then move forward, uh, with putting in a signal. It's just that you have satisfied, uh, these criteria that, which says that it's justified or appropriate, uh, to, to, uh, go forward with, uh, evaluating, uh, signalization is, uh, you know, the best, the, the best, uh, recommendation. So, overall, it's about nine warrants. Uh, most of them are based on traffic volume and demand. Uh, we did satisfy the warrants at Wire Road. Uh, so traffic signalization is, is something that should be, uh, was, uh, considered as, as, as one of the alternatives. And where are we? So, and that's where we are here, looking at the roadway alternatives. Jim, were you gonna get into this? Yes.
I can get in there and take over from now. Um, there was, there's three, there's actually four options, you know. You know, we have to consider. The first is the do-nothing or no-build alternative. Has to be under federal guidelines, we have to, we have to evaluate. Well, it obviously does not improve traffic operations. It does not meet the purpose and need. It does not provide for the pedestrian connective, connectivity that is warranted down through the corridor. So that becomes very self-evident. Okay, we, it's, it's, we look at it, okay, great, doesn't do anything. Let's, let's move on. Uh, so option one that, uh, Beta looked at was, um, realigning Wire Road for a stopped, um, stop condition, i.e. it's going to, uh, stay within the right-of-ways out there. It will be realigned, so it comes in a little bit more to a ninety-degree, uh, intersection versus a, a severe skew. Um, uh, their, their traffic numbers that Dennis has been talking about don't warrant a left turn and a right turn coming out of, um, Wire Road. It could be a single lane coming out. Uh, there was a, you know, um, warrant, you know, it would, did evaluate putting in a northbound left turn lane into Wire Road. That was extended, that, from the one that's presently out there right now, based on the traffic volumes. Um, and this one evaluated no new type of access into, uh, MYA, um, potentially maybe relocating across Wire Road because there's not enough gaps in the, in the, in the flow out there to make a safe crossing from Wire Road into MYA. So the idea was to keep, uh, the traffic on Route Three, Daniel Webster, and provide a left turn lane going into, uh, MYA or for the Daniel Webster southbound traffic. So there would be some queuing of cars out there, you know, in a dedicated lane. Uh, they wouldn't be taking up the through lane. Um, all of the alternatives that we're going to talk about start, as Kyle had shown, start down by Babusick. Uh, they all evaluated a pedestrian sidewalk on the east side, starting north of the library. Uh, I mean, it's on the east side, starting right off across from the Babusick intersection and proceeding northerly up through, uh, the MYA frontage and tying into the Wire Road realigned intersection and the, and the future bridge project, because there's a sidewalk there, which takes you to Front Street. I tell you, it takes you up to Twin Bridge. Um, sidewalks on the west side started, uh, there's an existing sidewalk now that's, goes from Babusick Lake Road north past the, the library. And that's where the improvements would start, because at that point, it's, it, it stops until it gets further north near Wire Road. There's a short and another little section up there. So they evaluated a, uh, a new sidewalk going all the way up through there. And as I, uh, spoke earlier, uh, the intersection of Church Street, uh, hinders the development of an ADA compliant. So one, the engineering study recommends that Church Street be closed so you could discontinue that and rebuild, uh, or reconstruct, construct a proper sidewalk along that area with proper ADA ramps coming down.
Jim, if you don't mind, uh, pardon, ask a question.
Yeah, I'm getting a little confused, because my understanding from the packet was that we were looking at the Wire Road intersection, not the entire project.
We, it, it's a Wire Road, it, it's safety and capacity, and it focuses on Wire Road, but it also dealt with pedestrian connectivity from Babusick Lake up through the Wire Road intersection and into the US Route Three Bridge Replacement Project, because that has two sidewalks on it that's being proposed. So that would continue, uh, allow for the continuation of sidewalks from like the MYA over to the Twin Bridge intersection, which then goes into, I think it's Sal's Pizza, I'm not, but the sidewalk in front of Sal's Pizza. So the connectivity was the safety concerns also. Uh, the pedestrian connectivity was also part of the safety study.
So the scope of the Wire Road project includes all the way from CVS up to?
No, excuse me.
Study, but what they looked into?
But I'm looking at costs here for construction. So that's what's raising my questions is, what does eight hundred and eight-hundred-ninety thousand dollars pay for within the scope of Wire Road?
It, it pays for sidewalk improvements from, um, uh, from Babusick Lake Road north, except for the ones that are exist in front of the library, those would remain as they are. And reconc, reconc, realigning, reconstructing Wire Road, um, with, uh, as a ninety-degree with stop conditions. Now, when you put the sidewalks in, we, uh, for pedestrian safety, there's a six-inch, you know, I mean, a vertical granite curb is put in. So that stops the flow of surface water off to the sides of the road. So we have to put storm drainage systems in to collect this water. And since you are in, uh, Merrimack, as an MS4 community, we have to look at how to treat the storm water and before it finds its way into Babusick, um, Brook. Uh, so that, that, those are items that are included into the, uh, to the costs that's down below, um, in, in, in the eight-hundred thousand dollars. If I may, I can advance this one slide. And this is, it's, I know it's hard to see at this, at the scale. Um, this is sheet three of three for concept number one. And, uh, as I mentioned, there is, um, sheet one and two basically start down at Babusick Lake and go, uh, road intersection and go, come up to this one. That includes the, the sidewalk improvements, the proposed sidewalk improvements on both the east side and the west side, um, and the crossing of Church Street and the storm drainage that would be required to facilitate putting sidewalks in and, uh, being able to intercept the, the, the runoff from the roadway. And it's a roadway only, and then get it off and get it into a treatment system that is either through, uh, leaching basins or through up at the MYA with the major intersection, you've got more roadway pavement. We'd be looking at a four, you know, a, a, a stormwater treatment, uh, area that has a four bay and then allows, you know, and a grassed area allows it. The sunlight is the biggest breakdown of hydrochirpines out there, and that's what you need. You need to have some area for the sunlight to get out. And then it would discharge in, uh, out of the, out of the treatment area into, uh, an over, overland flow before it gets to, um, the Brook. And so it's no, there's no pipe directly to the Brook. So that's sort of the cost, and an overview of all the costs that we have in here for the eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. If that answers your question. Okay. So as you see here, right here on this slide, we, you know, uh, Wire Road is, is realigned. It comes in like more ninety-degree. It stays within, uh, stays within the, uh, the, it's exist, the existing right-of-ways. Um, there's an area what was formerly pavement where Wire Road used to have the, uh, the slip right coming on to US Route Three southbound. That would be, the pavement would be removed. That would be, uh, you know, turfed, luminosated, uh, green space area. There would be sidewalks in there. Sidewalks that continue up Wire Road for eventual continuation up towards McGaw and, and further in, per your master, the town's master plan. And, um, uh, at the cross, what's not shown on this one is, but there were, there is an existing crossing of US Route Three to get into the MYA from the sidewalk that's on the west side of US Route Three. Um, that crossing would be enhanced to have better striping and would have a rectangular, uh, rapid flashing beacon on both sides that if somebody could push, solar powered, you push it, it activates, you know, a, a ring of lights going around to, to alert people that you're, somebody wants to cross the sidewalk and, 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 yeah, the, the motor is to stop. So that's what's included into, uh, concept alternative number one. Yes, uh, as we go forward, it's eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety thousand, excuse me, um, dollars. And, uh, and it, it provides func, it does provide the functionality of, uh, you, you know, some improved operations out there. Another concept that came up was concept number two. This came out of the local concerns meeting and, um, reach out that occurred after the local concerns meeting from people talking about the potentiality of a roundabout at that, at, at Wire Road. Um, so, leaving everything from the Wire Road intersection southerly towards Babusick, the sidewalks, uh, Beta looked at putting in a, uh, what would be required to put a wire, uh, a roundabout in, in, in this facility that would have to make it, uh, that would be able to work. Uh, to do that, you're looking at, um, a, a roundabout that has an out-to-out diameter of about a hundred-and-sixty feet, very big. Uh, there's a lot of traffic, eighteen thousand cars out on US Route Three, Daniel Webster, uh, that has to be accommodated. Um, and to, to incorporate something of this magnitude, we had severe, it, it results in severe impacts to Butters. It means land takings, easements to get everything in on this, um, um, to, to make this happen. And if I may, I'm going to advance the slide. And as you can see, here's the roundabout. Um, and it's hard to see in this, but there is, it is very huge. It extends down into the MYA, uh, property significantly. Beta has worked in a nice, uh, slip right that keeps the traffic moving northbound, uh, right on through, through the slip right very easily and on to, uh, continue on Daniel Webster over the bridge that's going to be relocated. Coming southbound on Daniel Webster Highway and coming off Wire Road, that becomes a whole different, uh, aspect where you really, as everybody's familiar, roundabouts. You have to get into the roundabout and, um, work your way around it. Um, they have been very creative of how we're going to deal with all this increased pavement and all the, uh, storm drainage. So they were very creative. They, they took the center of it, which sometimes is devoted just to landscaping. They're using that as a stormwater treatment plant, area, the stormwater treatment area. So you, you got this green space, a large green space. Let's use it for functionality. It's green, it'll be grassed, and then it will, you know, continue across an outlet, um, as, uh, towards Babusick Lake, uh, but excuse me, Babusick Brook, um, and over, overland flow. But as, as we've, as I've said, it's severe impacts, number driveways had to be relocated. Um, it, uh, has, uh, some limited potential for people coming out of the driveways. Uh, you know, the more, uh, commercial ones, um, being so close to the roundabout. And, uh, so, uh, but it was, it was analyzed. And, and, uh, uh, this also required the, the, uh, the, uh, most impact to area utilities, uh, to, to get them relocated further away. Uh, they're currently at roadside edge out there on the way, on the, um, the east side and, um, up at the intersection. And then, uh, they would have to be significantly moved away. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of fiber optics, there's a lot of- And there's a lot of, there's a lot of fiber optics, there's a lot of three phase power, it's three phase power up there. This, the associated cost on this in current dollars is about one point six million, which is essentially just barely, almost double what the realigned intersection stop condition is. So due to the impacts to Butters, due to the amount of land area that would have to be, you know, taken, which, excuse me, not only talking construction costs, you would have to acquire land to have this put in. So there's costs associated with that. This alternative was not deemed favorable. It was evaluated, we understand it, it doesn't work, it's too, too expensive, too much impact to the community. So, which led to option three being the signalized intersection, which is the recommended alternative. Now, in this one, again, it's pretty much outside the intersection, south of M Y A. The sidewalks would be the same as originally proposed in option one, both sides of the roads, curbing, drainage in there. When you get into the realignment of Wire Road, it would include the, excuse me, news traffic signals. And this, this one has a cost of about one point four million current dollars. But the neat thing is, and here's a sign of a colorized version, what it looks like as you can, as you can see coming in. What this does include is a brand new egress access for M Y A at a signalized intersection now. So that helps with, as Dennis has talked about, the low level of service for Saturday peak hours. It also does keep the existing access into the M Y A, but redevelops it as a northbound right turn in, right turn out to northbound only. There's no way to get to southbound movements into this. It would also keep the existing crosswalk and utilize the rectangular flashing beacons for pedestrian safety. So this one, again, is all contained within the right of way. The only thing that happens with some of these sidewalks is we might have some, on all the proposals where the sidewalks and we've, we've taken the roadway and we've raised the edge of the pavement up seven inches for sidewalk. We have some slope on the back of sidewalk that may extend into private property. We need temporary, permanent slope easements, but all these projects. But in terms of mass takings, like you saw on the concept alternative two for the roundabout, that does not occur. So this is sort of an overview of, a colorized overview of, of the plan. Yellow is all proposed, green is pa-
Quick question.
Sure.
Before you move on.
Excuse me.
You had mentioned about the signal from the M Y A. Now, I, could you repeat that? You said you could take a right on to Route 3 northbound, but you would not be able to do it southbound?
If I may clarify, the existing, the existing egress or the existing access point now for the M Y A, which is to the south of the building?
Correct.
That would be reconfigured to be a northbound coming in, right turn in-
Only.
And right turn out of M Y A to northbound only. The major intersection would be relocated up to where the signal is-
Correct.
And that would have, that would have its own-
Signal left or right.
So if somebody's coming out of there, it places a call, the signals recognize it and open up for either a cross movement or only a dedicated movement.
Understood, thank you. I misunderstood when you first said it. Thank you.
I tend to talk fast.
No, I-
And I cover a lot of stuff, so.
I was trying to pay attention and when you said no southbound, I went, whoa, now I understand. Thank you.
All the yellow is the proposed in there. The green is what is being brought back from paved. We're reducing some of the impervious areas out there, which we'll talk about in a little bit, the permitting people really, really love. And here is a blow up of the intersection. As you can see, it's similar, very similar to what we showed on option one, alternative number one. It's just now you've got signals, signals out here that tend to help the flow of movement. The other part about this is I, as we was, we all spoke about earlier is putting signals here, they can communicate with the signals at Babusick, C V S, up to Front Street by Microwave. It's line, Microwave is line of sight. So having a signal system here, what that allows to do, and Dennis can probably talk to it a little bit better than I can, it allows the signals to be coordinated for through the mass through movements and bring side streets in.
Right.
You know, as needed. So that, that's a benefit.
Did they do that at Continental Boulevard a few years ago when the apartments went in?
Yeah.
And that, I think, my personal observation is that made that area much better. So I think it's, you know, it's, the technology's kind of nice.
Good. So in a nutshell, this is it, this is our preferred, this is what we've recommended to, to, to the town. It's been reviewed, you know, we reviewed it with Kyle and Don prior to, as it was being developed. And so concept alternative number three is the recommended one. Slightly less money than the roundabout, but by far much better functionality going forward into the future.
Thank you, Jim. I just, I actually was kind of surprised that the price between the roundabout, which I think won't work, I agree with your recommended option, but from one point four to one point six, with the takings and everything else of the roundabout, I'm shocked that either that's too low, I was imagining that's either too low or the one point four is too high for the comparison. So I don't know.
Well, I think part of it, if I may, just the, the cost of traffic signal equipment today. Like if we were to do this, you know, back when this project started, I think we would see much, potentially much less number. So we're, you know, we're using today's prices. And that, that's really driving up. And it's not just the steel structures, which are quite expensive, but just the wiring, every, every piece of equipment has just been escalated.
Great point, thank you.
And I don't think the one point six for the roundabout includes the land that you would have to go out and acquire.
That's right.
We're certainly talking construction costs.
So it's going to be more, the roundabout would be more than one point six?
All in, right. If I, if I could, just before you move on, just real quickly, one other item to highlight here is the inclusion of the crosswalks across Route 3 on either side, something we would not propose on option one, the unsignalized, but could incorporate here because we can control that movement safely with the signalization.
So what this does is allow your pedestrian activity that's up good off Wire Road to directly access the M Y A without having to go down, then cross, they can, would have an intersection that could be controlled totally through for pedestrian activity. So good point, Dennis.
Andy? Just to clarify, the, the difference between option one and option three, option three, we're getting a controlled exit from M Y A and we're also getting crosswalks across D W Highway with the addition of the, the traffic lights. So that's really the, the difference. I guess my, my question, we said the purpose of this is safety and we said there's only been five accidents in ten years. I don't know how that equates to some of the other intersections we have in, in town, Kyle, whether that's, makes this one of the most dangerous intersections or not, but I'm really concerned about adding a traffic light at this intersection, what it does to traffic in that area during peak hours. I know we said we can coordinate them, but do we know what impact that's going to have? Is it, is there any kind of analysis on that?
Well, that, yes, there, there was. Part of, part of the study was to look at, you know, we, we did do the analysis, that level of service analysis I referred to earlier, looking at this as, as a signalized option. And part of the safety component, just starting there real quick, is the safety of all users, the multimodal function, the pedestrians and, and if we're talking about that and focusing on the safety of all users, signaling this intersection provides the optimal safety for the pedestrians that we would, you know, hope and expect to be using the intersection. And, and part of the idea of looking at the adjacent locations, the coordination is, what that really does is the overall operations of the corridor, you're looking at a system, not just individual locations and how they operate relative to one another. And what our, our analysis showed with that level of service, we actually achieve a better overall delay, lower delay and level surface of the system when we include the signal as opposed to not.
So when, I think before you said roughly that area had a level of service of C during peak hours, we think with the addition of a, of a signal there, that is either going to be C or lower once the additional signal's there?
It's more about, so yes, that, that will be for that. So when we're talking about an unsignalized intersection, which it is right now, mostly what you're focusing on is the stop control, in this case, Wire Road. Theoretically, Route 3 has no control, there's nobody turning, with the exception of somebody, you know, turning left, going northbound. So one thing that, you know, you do have to realize and understand, and I think, you know, you're certainly picking up on it, is when we add a signal, we are now stopping traffic on Route 3 that does not stop today. So that, that's part of the analysis and sometimes that's, that's missed and it is a good observation, I'm glad you're bringing up. What we are noticing though, as part of the, or what we are seeing or what the analysis is indicating to us is that when, you know, we, we step away and look at the corridor as a whole, we start to see an overall, including this location, Front Street and C V S, because what we're doing is we're controlling the progression of traffic through the corridors as opposed to just as they come down Front Street, they can sort of break up, there's maneuvers in and out of driveways and then they get to Babusick a little bit less, you know, regul- regulated, if you will. It's more of a kind of controlling a platoon through the corridor. So that's, that's why, you know, what we would, you know, that's why we're seeing the, the better overall operations through the corridor.
If I may, counselor, I'd also like to add that. And based on our quantum experience in the area from doing McGaw Bridge Road, what we notice and everybody tends to notice that, that the way Wire Road is currently aligned, it's almost impossible to make a left turn. So people don't make left turns. They go, they just go make a right, it's a slip right onto U S Route 3. People coming down Wire Road tended to want to turn onto McGaw, head over and come out onto Route 3 up, further up there. So you had a, you, which you, which is outside the scope of the study, but what we observed as we were doing the bridge and we were watching traffic movements because the bridge was closed, we just, was that the people wanted to use that as their left turn, go to McGaw, go up to, go up to that point. So now you're inducing traffic onto other local roads that may not have to have it with a signalized intersection where they can easily make a left turn right onto, directly onto Daniel Webster Highway and head northbound. So that is a benefit that comes out of here that really is outside of what was asked for us to, you know, either qualify it or quantify it.
Barbara, if you-
Yeah, just curious, you did a traffic study, a full traffic study? What are the actual traffic counts? Do you have those by any chance? They're not included?
They're not? We, we do. Are you?
No, only the timing, not the actual number of vehicles trespassing through that area.
Well, what did you mention earlier? Just overall on a daily, we're seeing, what was about eighteen, twenty thousand vehicles a day?
Eighteen thousand vehicles out there on the road.
And also, how many parking spaces are there at the M Y A?
Oh, I don't know offhand. I guess we could count off the plan here.
Well, I mean, that would be important to know. I mean, I know there's about fifty, maybe sixty in the front, maybe another twenty-five, thirty in the back, depending on if they're using the grass. So I'm looking at a lot of work that is being designed for maybe thirty, forty cars?
So we did get-
That's why I'm asking the question.
Right.
Because it comes down to a cost per car.
Cost per car. The, we did get some data at M Y A, you know, exiting on, on that Saturday peak hour, there was about, about seventy-eight vehicles during that single peak hour on, on Saturday, exiting the M Y A driveway, about forty-seven going left, thirty-one going right. And the, going back to this alternative, the benefit of bringing in the, this driveway access here is it really does help out those left turns that, that exit now that they can make it out of a signalized location as opposed to where they're doing it right now.
And, and honestly, as the years have gone on, whether it was formal or informal discussions about this, this is, the third choice is what I've envisioned myself and it's, the conversation has lent itself, understanding that there was work that would have to be done with the M Y A. Paul?
Yeah, yeah, if I may also, counselors, included in, and I'm not certain if you have it in front of you, but you know, in the packet, outside of the report, there's appendices that have all the traffic counts that were done and that's like two hundred and fifty-six pages. And if you don't have it, we certainly can have it provided to you.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
Just a quick question on the Route 3 going south at this intersection. Are you proposing the left turn lane or is it just going to be through traffic at the M Y A now? Because I know there's some talk about bridge and sites with the bridge for that turn. If you're coming south on D W.
If you're coming southbound on D W right now with the clearing of trees and everything, the traffic volumes didn't warrant a dedicated left turn into M Y A, but the site distances would be improved so that, that southbound movement could support a through left and right at that location.
The only reason I'm saying that is that on a Saturday, it backs up in that area with the left turn going into the M Y A. And now that you took out that entrance southerly and made that only a right only, the people have to come in and I don't know how that's going to back up traffic in that intersection and take a left. I would assume that might cause more rear end opportunities, but people not paying attention.
Well, the lights, is it going to back up traffic? Am I understanding what Paul just said, that it's a single lane, north and south, single lane? So if somebody wants to turn left into M Y A, they have to wait for the light to kick over, so it'll stack up at that point?
You would have queuing in both, you know, queuing in the southbound lane for the light to turn green and to allow, you know, and, and then there would be gaps enough to make the left-hand turn going in through the controlled movement.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry, I'm not a traffic engineer.
No, I'm just trying to say, yeah, by queuing it, you know.
Right, you can, it's not like you have to wait for the light to turn to let you go in, it's not a left turn lane. You're just going to, if there's an opening, you're going to take your left into M Y A.
I guess the best one I can rationale is when you look at Bedford Road coming southbound. Here, Bedford Road, you turn, you have a right to get onto Bedford Road, but then if you want to come into the Walgreens or any of that, that left, you're, you're in dedicated through and left movement.
Yes.
And it doesn't seem to affect that.
No, and that's, that works for me, I just wasn't-
I'm just saying that.
-up on it.
So, but there is no dedicated left movement?
Correct.
It's all part of the flow.
But if you, if your light is green and there's that-
You can go, like you can go with, you know, yes, I understand that, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking by removing it, is there a possibility of throwing that left only turn lane there?
We certainly go back and take a look.
I, I just, I don't know, I, you know, I know that it's kind of tight right there with the bridge and everything else.
That's one of the critical constraints. The, the lefts we counted, just give you the data real quick, was about twenty making a left into the M Y A-
Okay, during that hour.
So, that one hour.
Kyle, did you?
I, I was just going to say, with the signal, it would operate the same way essentially it does now, except that you'd have that red stop for northbound and southbound periodically if someone was coming out from the other two legs. But when, when you have the green, it's going to operate the same as it would today or if it was a stop controlled intersection at Wire Road, because you're still going to wait for the gap from the northbound traffic to take the left, whether it's stop controlled or today or with a signalized intersection for the left turn lane southbound into M Y A, it operates the same in all three scenarios.
Yep. All right. Juan?
Have you, or was any consideration given to what happens when the other major route through town, the F E V or turnpike is plugged up some, somewhere just north, say, of Exit Ten and everybody in the world with their smartphones and so on is now on Route 3 at different than your peak hours? And that may be just a foolish question from an old man, but-
It's a good question and I know Beta worked with the Regional Planning Commission on the, the overall traffic network on, on that. What they, I, to give you an exact answer, I, I can't, I can't do that right now, but we could find out for you. I think we're dealing with only with the local network at that point.
Right.
Okay, Nancy. Can you, can you, if I may?
Yep.
At what point, at what point of saturation or use does the coordination of signals and those three short stops fail? Which is the basis of my question.
Right, right. So basically kind of going back a little bit, the data that we collected, the demand that's currently out there right now is not resulting in an overcapacity situation. There is additional capacity available with, with this alternative and frankly even with the other one. So what we would have to see in terms of an increase in, in traffic during a, a single hour is, is probably in some cases tripling what's out there right now, close to about two thousand, seventeen hundred, two thousand vehicles, whereas, you know, we're seeing, look at the right number, you know, somewhere around, you know, seven hundred, close to eight hundred. So double to triple what, what you're currently seeing right now before I think we would start to see- So double to triple what, what you're currently seeing right now before I think we would start to see, um, you know, breakdowns and functionality jammed up, you know, uh, you know. Now, you know, level service F, as I said before, where unreliable sort of, um, interrupted flow that it's just not, it's just not moving along. If that, if that explains it well enough.
Nancy? Here are the thoughts that I'm having. Um, number one, the realignment of Wire Road is a given, that has to be done regardless. The angle that exists now is the major issue. So the realignment, I think, is a given regardless. The only thing that intrigues me about alternative number three, and there are pros and cons, I understand. But the only thing I'm thinking about is future. Right now you have the MYA building there. Who knows in ten years what we're going to do or want to do with that property, fields or whatever. And having that access, which is basically a road already established, really does set the stage for a much more easily changeable kind of situation there. Probably not the correct way to put it. Let's say, for example, and MYA, don't get nervous, I'm just talking. This is none of the plans, but let's say someone won Mega bucks and won five billion dollars. And they decide, well, I want to build a new library. And I, that's where I want to put it. I want to put it there and I'm going to give you money so you can get fields here and MYA building is going to get another one there. And isn't that a wonderful place for it? Well, you already have a road access to it. I think it just opens up the possibilities for future. That's my only thought. And it will be a lot more expensive to do it then, ten years from now, fifteen years from now, when I'm not even sitting here. And it, it would be good planning for future development. Especially at a twenty-eighty cost, because in those days, it will not be, we're not going to get eighty percent. I'm not done yet, hold on. In terms, uh, so that's my thought. I think it's, there has to be some serious consideration for future, that's all. And that really does provide an opportunity that really isn't imperative now. We don't need it now, but it really would be very for the future, thinking for the future. The, the big, uh, problem that has come up that I think is the, the backup. If you're going presently now, south on Daniel Webster, and you want to take a left to go into the MYA parking lot. That's backing cars up now. Whether it be backing up at the light, which is going to be controlled because it's going to be shorter, or you're gonna create a backup, trying to take a left to go into the MYA entrance. To me, it's six of one, half dozen or another. It's going to be backup regardless, at least with the light you have controlled, that's all. And I did not, and I lived near Exit 11, which had the horrible problem for years. And the new signaling has solved the problem, which I didn't believe was going to. So I'm eating my words. It has created, it has solved the problem. So my point is, I have more faith in it now. So when you're talking about signalizing and being able to use that system. If you had told me three years ago, I wouldn't have believed it. Now I do. I have more faith in it because I've seen it in Exit 11 and Continental. So those are my thoughts on number three, that's all. Now, is it worth the money? If we're talking about twenty percent, you're talking two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for alternative three for the town. Town's portion.
Correct.
If you're talking about option number one, I did have it down here. I want to say a hundred and seventy-five.
Eight hundred, almost eight hundred.
No, no, for the town's portion.
Oh, uh, one eighty.
One eighty, okay. So you are talking a hundred thousand dollars. So I think that's the, the balance. We need to consider all those things, because I think we can do it if it's, if we're just thinking now. I think just do the, uh, option one. If we're thinking of the future and making the options available at today's money with twenty percent, today's money, I'm, I'm leaning toward three. So that's, those are my thoughts.
So I can see it both ways, but I also look at the possibility of we don't know what might go in and replace the MYA building, whether that's going to be a high traffic or low traffic, the same as what we have now. It could even increase the number of cars that are going in and parking there and thus coming out again. So that in my mind would become part of the project for whatever would be put there. Versus trying to guess now what that would be. But what I see now is that we've got twenty cars making a left according to our consultants. And we're putting in a pretty sophisticated traffic light system to accommodate left turns on twenty cars. I'm not seeing the cost benefit analysis there. And like I said before, if something else does get built in that space, then you would need a whole new traffic study. And a, and a, and an analysis of what exactly is needed to control the inflow and outflow from that particular site. So I don't think we can guess what that is right now.
I mean, are we making, we're not making a decision tonight. This is just to give us information?
We're presenting in what our preferred, why we came to the preferred alternative. The other thing, as we've discussed, was with the signalized intersection, you have the ability now to provide four-way controlled pedestrian activity, which as a, uh, stop condition is, is not there. And, uh, we'd have to go to rapid fire, you know, uh, at that location also, rapid fire, rectangular flash and beacons. And, um, you know, the pedestrian activity, what may be the future pedestrian activity coming down Wire Road from the residential areas up that way, once sidewalks are continued and, and, um, this allows a, uh, a safer crossing. That's what, you know, we deem with the traffic signalization.
If I could just clarify one point that was made, the decision to go forward with the traffic signal at Wire Road was not based solely just on the twenty lefts that are turning into the MYA. There are, you know, currently in the afternoon, over two hundred lefts in the opposite direction. Uh, that, that's probably the most critical volume going through there.
Wire going into.
Going northbound from, uh, Route 3 on, onto Wire Road. So that the, uh, the traffic control signal is, is recommended to, you know, safely accommodate and control all the movements that are coming into the intersection, the twenty lefts into the MYA. The idea there was we had this opportunity, putting in the signal, putting into the driveway to reduce, um, and eliminate the lefts at the MYA, as Jim described earlier, with eliminating that lefts and have and control all the conflicts, remove conflict points.
How many warrants were met for that?
So there, uh, there, there were three.
Three.
Three that, yeah.
Thanks.
So, I mean, for two hundred and eighty K, which is the town's portion of that, I, I don't, if we went it alone, I don't know that we could do the sidewalks for two hundred and eighty K. We just couldn't do it. So having the state or, or the federal, um, assistance of the eighty percent is, is a huge benefit. I will say, I, I do have concerns about the traffic lights. At one day, I'm going to be sitting there in traffic or sitting there at a red light, asking myself, what in the heck did we do? And I'll probably be there one day. Um, but I think Nancy, I, I think you have a very good point. Having that controlled access from the current MYA gives us options in the future. And what it would cost us to go back and tear that up and put it in in the future, I, I think we'd be foolish to, you know, lose sight of the forest through the trees and say, let's not do it now, let's wait for another day. I think today's the day to do it and to keep those options open for the future. So, um, for that reason alone, I'm inclined to, to agree with you and, and go with option three.
But we don't have to make a decision today anyway, right?
So because we set this as an appointment, uh, there won't be a vote of the council tonight. The, the way I guess I envisioned this proceeding was if there was general consensus or agreement of, from the council with the preferred alternative, we would move forward with that and I would write a letter to DOT recommending that we move to the next phase of the project. If, if we don't get the sense that there's general concurrence, uh, I think what we'd probably want to do is re-agenda the item uh, for a formal, uh, new business item or public hearing.
That's what we'll do. It's, um, just because there's some conversation going on. I'm on board with number three, but.
Let's get a consensus.
I mean, we can, we can definitely do that. Um, I'm just thinking if there is, there seems to be some, uh, we'll get, whatever the consensus is, there seems to me to be some that might warrant the further discussion as an agenda item, but, uh, Paul?
We could go either way. You can do your consensus, you can wait to take the vote. However, I think that, um, you might be getting emails from both sides of the aisle on this. There's individuals in the audience, I'm sure that are on either side of the aisle as well. I know that my neighborhood really perked up tonight with, uh, I live off of Wire Road, so they really perked up with, uh, you know, thinking roundabout versus traffic signal versus, versus stop sign. You know, I, I hate to go and age myself, but I can remember one that was a yield. And the conversations we had when we made it a stop sign. Um, so I don't know if the council wants to just take a few, a week or agenda this for January and, uh, constituent input before they make their decision, or if the council wants to move ahead, they can move ahead.
I'd like, I would like to do that. We'll just agenda it at the, as, as soon as practical.
Well, we'll get it, I'll get on the first of meeting in January if that's what the council wants.
Perfect. Barbara? Also, I would like to see some itemized figures, uh, for each of these work items that are part of this proposal. Just in case we decide to pull something out, because as you know, I mean, they're talking sidewalks. Well, sidewalks, do we really need sidewalks in that area right now? And yes, I understand the eighty-twenty. But there aren't a lot of pedestrians there, except, you know, maybe when we're having a parade in the center of town. So, and again, having sat on, and I see Tim in the back, having sat on the planning board now for eighteen months. I, if these big corporations who are building and developing here in Merrimack, keep coming back to the planning board because they're tweaking their plans all the time. They're not necessarily locking down the future of their vision either. So I really hesitate to do some planning and spend dollars on something for the future, when we don't know what the future is right now. Because right now, from a tax perspective, you know, it's crunch time for a lot of people here. We've got almost sixty houses on the market. Because people are finding the property taxes to be too high. We, I, in the whole time I've lived in Merrimack, we haven't had sixty houses on the market. So I, I think I'm being probably more aware of costs and what we really need, yes, going into the future. But let's not overplan for the future, because big corporations can't. So that's my two cents, and I agree with January.
I, I just wanted to also ask the council, because part of these projects, and I, and Jim, I know you guys worked hard on this and, and brought a very good, comprehensive plan together. But part of this process is closing down Church Street. And I know, been here long enough to know the conversations that the council had last time with Church Street. And the input you guys received from fire and police. So in January, if you guys would like, we'd like to bring that back. I would like to bring that back forward as part of your discussion, so that they can weigh in on the movements on Church Street and how they're going to get their fire trucks up there and police emergency vehicles up there in case of, uh, if we do close that down.
Did you have another thing?
No, uh, Barbara and I could debate back and forth and I will, I think I've made it clear.
I think we stepped on the presentation, so I don't know if there's anything further that you want to move with.
They haven't enjoyed the debate.
We do, uh, we do have a, just a couple more slides and it just, um, looks, I'm going backwards.
Sorry about that.
And, and it's where we are with the environmental recognition of what we have to do environmentally and culturally for this. The project would require a standard shoreland, um, permit, because we're removing trees for the four-way intersection that are in the two hundred and fifty-foot buffer for, uh, uh, you know, for Babusik. We also have to do an alteration of terrain permit for DES, because of the scope of it, coupled with the bridge, because now we're putting everything together. There are currently no endangered or threatened species that will be impacted. That's through US Fish and Wildlife, which is taking, you know, takes a, you know, a big, uh, you know, I guess, Hugh, we're, okay, we're good on that. Um, we did do, we did meet with DOT's Cultural Resource Agency at their meeting, uh, which is, uh, everybody from, uh, Division of Historical Resources, Federal Highway, Army Corps, uh, you know, all the agencies relative to historical property, archaeological, uh, concerns. They, uh, tabled, uh, any decision to, we did a historical sidewalk, uh, through the property, through the corridor, which we did in, uh, the end of November. We met down here, we had SHPO State Historic Preservation Officer, we had people from DOT, we had people from, uh, the Division of Historical Resources. We walked the properties, we walked, not the properties, excuse me, we walked the corridor. Um, and based on the recommended plan that, of, uh, option three, uh, but even just talking about the sidewalks. Uh, they had no further, uh, need for additional studies of any of the buildings in the, in the area or any concerns, as long as we stayed within the right of way. If you were going to pursue the roundabout, yes, they had major concerns and we'd have to do a lot more studies, but, uh, since that wasn't the recommended. We do have to do, since federal money is involved, we have to do what is called the NEPA document, the National Environmental Policy Act document, we have to, yeah, we, we're already in the process of that for reach out to state, local, town, uh, offices for concern, you know, relative to, you know, their concerns, and we put it together in that, you know, in that document. And then since, uh, the MYA is, you know, MYA, it's really a town park. We have to coordinate with Federal Highway for Section Four on parks, impacts to parks. You know, and if you put the intersection in and what changes may happen to that, uh, we don't see that's a major issue, but it's just some of the permitting we have to go through, uh, just to give you a heads up. We identify it, this doesn't happen now, this will happen after we have, uh, the engineering study completed. Uh, have your, you know, we, we get through the input, the January meeting, we can complete the engineering study, submit it to DOT and Federal Highway, and at that point, once they have approved it or given their comments, we move, you know, the project moves into the design process. As we mentioned, right of ways and easements, um, outside of the, uh, option two, which is the, the roundabout, there is relatively minor easements required, and that's only for, uh, slope easements for the back of sidewalk, because we're raising the grade seven feet in some locations. Uh, seven feet, seven inches, my apologies on that. Um, and that happened, and since we're in a NEPA document, um, uh, process with the Federal Highway and with, uh, DOT. The town can start, we can identify what the impacts may be during the preliminary design phase. The town can start to, uh, uh, to do some, uh, discussion with property owners, just to say, hey, be aware, we're going to have to go down. Negotiations cannot go forward until the NEPA document has been approved by Federal Highway. So that just kind of, this is what the summarizes up, uh, then very similar, this is very similar to the, you know, when we did the public presentation for US Route 3 Bridge Replacement. So, um, construction costs, uh, estimate right now of one point four for alternative three. We did on the public informational meeting as required by Federal Highway and DOT. The last thing, as I mentioned, we'll pull together the engineering study, uh, report. This was a draft, we'll go into as a final, based on all the comments and, and apparently future work session. That gets submitted to, uh, DOT and this is basically a summarization of where we are as a, as your consultant team that, you know, signalization, intersection of Wire Road, coordination of the signals, realignment of Wire Road, new MYA. Access egress sidewalks, both sides of Route 3 has the smallest footprint of impact, least impact to aerial, uh, aerial utilities and underground utilities. And our recommendations, if we need to go forward and, uh, DOT will reimburse it eighty percent. And, uh, if everything stays, uh, on schedule, we'll be in construction in, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-five. So. Questions, you certainly had enough and, uh, to us, which is great, um, but appreciative. Yeah, and to be honest with you, no, there's times we do presentations, everybody just sits there and go, okay, thank you. Uh, you know, so it's like, no.
Not this crowd, sorry.
And which is good, believe me. I appreciate, we appreciate it from, from a consultant point.
We used to have five members on the board, uh, until two thousand and six, and once you added two more, the meetings just got longer. It's just, just the way it is.
Well, I've been here the whole time, so it hasn't been.
If I could just add one little thing, we didn't have it as part of the presentation, but I think it's important for the abutters to hear. So one of the, um, items of interest we received after the local concerns meeting was, uh, there's a couple parcels that have fairly wide driveways or, or, or different access needs than a normal parcel. And we, we did talk with our, our consultant team and the decision was made. And we did talk with our consultant team, and the decision was made, when we go forward with the project, that in those areas, we'll do an at-grade sidewalk that, that vehicles can roll over, so we're not gonna impact the current use of any of the parcels. So I thought that was worth saying in the public record and letting you guys know.
Is that the asphalt angled curb that you're talking about?
It'll be either, probably something like that, yeah, exactly.
A little bit.
Or it could, it could be, you know, granite, kind of like we have in the roundabout, by the concrete, kind of a shaved granite lip, or even just at-grade, similar to what we have on Natta Cook Road by Wasserman Heights, where it's just a more, more of a path than a, than a raised sidewalk. But we did hear that as a comment, and, and it was a very important comment. We don't want to take anyone's rights from their current use of their properties.
Right, no, because I can think of coming. Jim?
Following Kyle's lead on that, what we did as, as part of the conversation in terms of where, you know, you had, you had to, the need for a sidewalk, but you didn't want to reduce it, one of the other thought was, instead of having a patina sidewalk, in those areas, it might go concrete. So there's a differentiation between private pavement, roadway, and, and then, you know, where you're supposed to stay. So, and painted sidewalks and things like that don't last, that's a constant maintenance issue for the town, so. Just, just another thought that's been considered.
But I, yeah, I mean, I think Conell's right out of the gate, a very lengthy section there, so. Okay, is there anything further? All right, we'll be discussing this real soon. But, um, okay, this evening, I mean, this evening, we actually probably won't, I don't want to be offensive in any fashion, pay public participation, but we will be, yeah. And that's, that'd be the best time, this was just to, to give us the presentation, and, but I appreciate you being here, and if you don't mind waiting till then, we definitely want you to come back. No, no.
Or if she has questions, she can get into my office, and we'll.
That's a good idea.
Parse them out to the individuals to get answers.
Thank you, Paul, that's what I was gonna suggest, if you could just get them to us, that'd be great.
If you get them to my office, Chairman, do you have, thank you.
Okay. All right, I guess we're good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate it, nice presentation.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your work on it.
All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of an American Rescue Plan Act cybersecurity implementation grant in the amount of fifty-thousand dollars made available through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for a cybersecurity implementation project at the wastewater treatment plant pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five-B and Charter Article Eight, Section Fifteen. And here this evening, Jonathan?
Jonathan.
Yes, Jonathan?
Yeah.
So, we were approached by a free grant, so to speak, at the beginning to basically assess our computer systems as part of infrastructure on wastewater and vulnerabilities. Through that process, they looked at our vulnerabilities and came up with a couple of suggestions for us that we're working through. And to help us get through some of these vulnerabilities, they have this fifty-thousand-dollar grant that we are able to apply for to help offset some of the costs to shore up some of our vulnerabilities. As you can imagine, Jonathan's here tonight, we, we're not gonna go over what those vulnerabilities are. But we do have a couple of them that we are working. I get an email, what, every couple of weeks, that they keep running tests and letting us know what the vulnerabilities are through this. With this grant, that'll help shore up some more of our, our resources and our vulnerabilities through, through our web and other areas. Jonathan might have a little bit more technical information as this grant, what this grant is for, and I'll let him say.
Yeah, the focus on this grant is specifically for the wastewater facility. However, we provide, you know, services such as internet that kind of tail into this and other services for the wastewater facility, so we can kind of get more bang for the buck, I guess, in this opportunity. So that's what we assessed is, what is the maximum value based on this vulnerability list on what we can do with this fifty thousand, because this is just the starting point, to get us, you know, to the next level, to try to help prevent some of these attacks that are happening to municipal situations. So that's what this is about. I mean, we have a pretty detailed assessment from two different angles. One is specifically on the wastewater operational cybersecurity needs, and then we have another one based on our emergency services operation. They kind of align very similar on a lot of these items. So we could go over anything in detail offline, if anybody cares to look at that. It's pretty significant, you know.
Yeah. All right, does anybody have any questions or thoughts?
Any long-term commitments or anything that comes with this, or is this just?
Just have to use the money for the intended purpose to shore up our security.
I think it's always extremely important, especially, especially today, so.
Yeah.
Yes, you all said Andy. I'll open the public hearing at eight forty-one. If anybody would like to speak, they could come to the mic or sit down next to Jonathan. Bill Boyd.
Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. For the record, Bill Boyd, one thirty-nine Joppa Road, State Representative, representing Hillsborough County District Twelve here in the town of Merrimack, and I support the council's acceptance of the money. Having sat behind there for ten years, and I'm sure all of you are well aware of this, but for the listening public at home, we've made a strong commitment into investing in, into our community, whether it be paving, Public Works Garage, in the, the long time it took for us to actually get to the point where we rehabbed our wastewater treatment facility. It only makes sense that we take the next step in adding a cybersecurity, cybersecurity component to what we're doing down there to make sure that everything stays up and functioning, because if wastewater shuts down, the entire town shuts down. And I mean that sincerely. So I ask the council for favorable, favorable acceptance of the grant money, and thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Bill. Good to see you. Anybody further would like to address this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at eight forty-two. It was a pleasure with the council.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. Move to accept and expend the American Rescue Plan Act cybersecurity implementation grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars made through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for cybersecurity implementation project at the wastewater treatment plant pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five-b and Charter Article Eight dash fifteen, and authorize the town manager to sign all and necessary documentation.
Second.
You weren't quick enough. Motion by Andy, a second by Lon, would you like to speak further to your motion? No, any further comments? None, I'll call the question, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, opposed or abstain, six zero zero. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Would you say something? Yes. All right. All righty, next on the agenda is, electrical shock or something, but the council, although the public hearing do authorize the acceptance of the amount of ten thousand dollars for the Bear Christensen Fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five-B and Charter Article Eight, Section Fifteen.
Mr. Chair, the Chris Christensen, if needed, can be reached by phone. However, he had an extensive talk with Finance Director Tom Bowlen today. And also, we have, he has another three thousand dollars, so the total is gonna be for thirteen thousand dollars. If so be it, ten thousand for principal, three thousand for income.
Yes.
And Tom can explain more of the conversations he has had with Mr. Christensen. I do want to say I did reach out to our attorneys, and I did reach out to the charitable trust, and there, every time something like this comes in, our donation, we'd have to accept it, and they both have confirmed that.
Okay, Tom, you have a mic back there?
I do, yes.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, so this, this is going to be an, an annual event is, is the, the plan. I think these, these funds were accepted and, and given to the trustee of trust funds probably more than a year ago now. But the way this is expected to work is that there will be donations on an annual basis to the fund, so that this is not the, the last time you will have this kind of an item on your agenda.
Okay. Andy?
So, I guess my question is, if we have, the, the way it's currently written of the amount of, but not to exceed ten thousand, why do we have to limit it at ten thousand? Why couldn't we say, but not to exceed twenty-five, thirty, whatever? And then, as he, as the Christiansens have additional funds, or, or anybody that would like to donate to this could do that, as long as it didn't exceed, if we can do it up to, but not to exceed ten thousand, why can't we do it up to, but not to exceed twenty or, or some other number?
Well, the way I understood it is that if it's, at the ten thousand dollar mark, it's gotta be specified, and I don't want to misspeak, I don't know if that's completely accurate.
No, I think that's, that's accurate, based on the conversations that have been had with the charitable trust division. And they actually pointed out today to Chris in, in his conversations, that, that the amount should really be a specific amount, as opposed to a not to exceed.
And we always put the not to exceed because at the time, we didn't know how much it was gonna be. But I'll read what our attorney has, because I asked that same question, Andy. "I believe that state law, RSA thirty-one colon nineteen, contemplates that acceptance requires an action as either legislative body or the governing body to set these funds. For Merrimack, that is the town council, in either case, so it perhaps not convenient, nonetheless, action by the governing body is required each time for the amount. You can't give an additional amount. It has to be a specific amount that you're accepting." So you're, right now, it's thirteen thousand dollars, ten thousand for principal, three thousand for income. If it comes back in a year, it's a specific amount that has to be accepted.
Lon?
No.
Is there any further? Then I'll open the public hearing at eight forty-seven. If anybody would like to address the council, you can sit over at the table or come to the mic over here. See, no one. I'll close the public hearing at eight forty-eight. It was a pleasure with the council. Nancy? I was waiting for that electrical shock.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the town council authorize the acceptance of the amount of thirteen thousand for the Bear Christensen Fund pursuant to RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five-b and Charter Article Eight dash fifteen.
Does it have to be delineated?
It has to be delineated, from amendment, ten thousand dollars for principal and three thousand dollars of the thirteen thousand dollars to be allocated towards income.
Second.
Is that good, Nancy?
Yeah, yes.
And seconded by Barbara, would you like to speak further to your motion?
Thank you.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, opposed or abstain, six zero zero. No, very nice. Anyhow, all right, legislative updates. You know, he's here because he misses us, that's what it is.
Two.
Is there any, by the way?
Did you want to talk, Nancy? You just got first.
As he steps to the mic, is there anything? Did you get anything?
I have not, nope, I haven't got any else, it's, Representative Boyd will tell you, it's been quite interesting up there in the last couple of weeks.
Very good.
What's been interesting? Not, nothing yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, we just, we just got sworn in. For the record, again, it's Bill Boyd, Hillsborough County District Twelve, representing the town of Merrimack. We were just sworn in within the last week, we will be convening on January fourth. Right now, we're waiting for committee assignments. The current makeup is two-hundred-and-one, one ninety-eight, and one TBD to be determined. So that's where we stand right now. So the one position that I can confirm is Janine Nodder has been reappointed as majority whip, so she'll be back in leadership, and I'm presuming that Representative Mooney will be brought back to, to finance as well, so. And I'm hoping to get back on Public Works and Highways to keep vigilance over the, the transportation plan and. Anyway, that's just a quick update that we've all been sworn in. Good to have Representative Murphy back with us. Familiar faces, Representative Healy, Rung Nodder, and newly-elected Representative Magoo, and Representative Thomas, and obviously Representative Rung. So you have eight committed individuals representing the town of Merrimack. Should feel very proud that they're all stepping up to focus on doing the work that the community has asked us to do, which is to serve the community of Merrimack, and I mean that sincerely, so. Other than that, I don't have much to, to say. Representative Murphy, did you have anything? Did I miss anything?
Nope, you did great.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
No, not yet, I'm sure we'll think of stuff.
We'll hear from you in the future.
Well, I, I do want to use this forum as an opportunity to talk about specific things that are going on up in Concord that are impacting Merrimack. One of the, not to toot my own horn, but I continue to serve on the New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Advisory Commission. The former chairman, as you know, ran for United States Senate, so there was a vacancy, and my colleagues on the commission elected me to be chair of the, of the Drinking Water and Groundwater Advisory Commission, so it's kind of, kind of a big deal. And the makeup of that commission is undergoing a little bit of a makeover right now, which has been interesting from my perspective, being chair and having, having an impact on inviting people to apply to be a part of the commission. So that's been, that's been exciting. And the applications are coming in for, for new rounds of, for grants and loans, and, and again, that, you know, targeting communities with need that have real issues regarding infrastructure, source water development, clean water, you know, obviously, us being dramatically impacted by, by water issues here over the last couple of years, and, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that over the next couple of years, that, that corner or that page is gonna turn and we can begin to press ahead and get back to some semblance of normality, if that's possible, so.
Yep, very good.
Anything else?
All right, anything?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, William.
Good to see everybody, thank you very much, Merry Christmas.
Take care, Merry Christmas. All right, so no further comments from our legislative delegation, town manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll keep my town manager's report short this evening due to the budget coming forward in the next couple of minutes. But I would remiss if I didn't want to congratulate Dawn Talamala and Sarita Croce for their new positions in, in the next days of their careers. They both have given the town of Merrimack a lot. Dawn has, has many projects, has Dawn's fingerprints on it, as Wasserman Park, the beach, Turkey Real Turnabout, Sewer, Drainage, you name it, she's been involved in it over her career here. And Sarita really worked diligently to get us thirty-two million dollars for the upgrade and a two-million-dollar grant over at our wastewater facility to bring us into the twenty-first century going from the nineteen-seventies. So I wish them both the best of luck. And finally, I'd like to wish our DPW director, Kyle Fox, who also resigned to take another position in our community, the best of luck. Kyle's been with the town for roughly seventeen years, was our engineer for a while, was our DPW operations manager for a while, was our director for at least five years. Kyle was instrumental in getting all our bridges in town on, within the bridge plan, and we only have one left, and that's the one that we talked a little bit about, the project over there, is the Babuza Lake Road Bridge, and that's in the project, and... Um, Kyle was instrumental in getting all our bridges in town on, within the bridge plan. And we only have one left, and that's the one that we talked a little bit about, the project over there is the Babuza Lake Road Bridge, and that's in the project. And without his diligently and, and working hard to get those bridges, we would be far behind. And uh, and we are much more advanced with our bridges than most communities in this, this state. So he has worked diligently to get our bridges as well as other projects throughout town to make sure, you know, he's responsible for our first tap grant that we received that we're still working on, but hopefully he'll come back and cut the ribbon when it's done uh in the fall, the spring of uh twenty twenty-four, so. But uh he's, want to wish him the best of luck in his next phase of his career.
Very good. Thanks, Paul, John, like, absolutely. All right, there's no, nothing of the consent agenda, no old business. Um, item one, under new business council, the considered request to withdraw up to one hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred two dollars for the purchase of two new vehicles and equipment that were included in the approved twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-eight capital improvement program. Good evening, Chief.
Evening, Council, thank you so much.
Uh, before the chief gets going on this.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, why don't you just wait a minute, because I'm sure he's gonna take all your thunder and.
I'm not taking any thunder from you, he's gonna talk all about it here, it's, it's simple for him. Um, I just want to let the council know about two, two and a half years ago, we came forward with a, a capital improvement plan for the fire department, and that's when we increased their deposit to four hundred thousand dollars. Um, this is all part of that plan that was approved a couple of years ago, and the chief has been following it. Um, of course, at the time, prices weren't where they are today, but um fortunately, it's all within the same money that we have been putting in that, that capital reserve fund, and he'll explain what he's looking to do.
Good evening, yes, so what we're looking to try to accomplish is uh the replacement of two vehicles within the organization. Uh, one is a nineteen eighty-eight pickup truck, we call it utility two, and the other one is to uh replace one of the fleet vehicles and shift one of the admin cars that we currently use for emergency response to one of those positions. Uh, and that's a two thousand and eleven Ford Expedition that we'd be looking to shift down, because that's in better shape than some of the other vehicles that we have in our fleet. So when I did pricing back in June, um, I had to do my best estimates on what we thought it would cost, so um, the total for both vehicles is one fifty-two nine oh two. Um, and again, I don't know what it's going to come back at when we start to go to look into the marketplace to see what's available, and I don't even know the timing that I'll be able to even get a vehicle, but um, this will be the first step is first, we have to get your approval to be able to seek the purchase of these vehicles, so I'll be glad to answer any questions that anybody has.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or thoughts for the chief?
Yeah.
Barbara?
So chief, uh, it says the vehicles and the equipment, is there any equipment that is salvageable off the other vehicles that are being retired?
So the pickup truck, um, again, I'm not sure what the condition of the plow unit is on that vehicle. Um, I did hear it was not original to the vehicle, it was purchased and placed on at a later point. We certainly will look at all avenues when we purchase a new vehicle, can we swap things over? Some of the radio equipment, obviously that's relatively new, so that will swap over. Uh, emergency lighting equipment, if we can do some swaps and things, but obviously the administrative vehicle, if it gets shifted down, that'll stay with the equipment that it has. Some of the radio equipment may get shifted in and out of it, but uh, other than that, yeah, it, there will be some equipment that needs to be purchased, so new lights for the vehicles. Uh, a new console type assembly for the admin vehicle to accommodate turnout gear and plans and being able to draw and write and do those types of things, so. Yes.
Andy?
Do we know what was budgeted to come out of the CIP for, for this year? I, I, I don't have that in front of me, but I'm just curious what we, what we had planned for, to come out of that versus what we're taking.
Hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars was supposed to come out, that's what we had budgeted last year, hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for fire equipment.
You're good. Okay, I'm satisfied, it's right on the money, thanks.
It um, it doesn't elaborate, in my backup information I have, it doesn't elaborate on uh the vehicles, the, what the, you are, you are, I may, maybe you said it and I wasn't paying attention. The cost of those individualized uh.
So the pickup truck will be roughly in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand eight hundred, and the command vehicle would be seventy-seven thousand one oh two. They may come in lower, I don't know. They may, if they come in higher, we'll have to figure that out, but um, that's a budget estimate that we put together when we put the capital plan together.
Okay, no, thanks, Chief. They don't give those things away, do they? Um, all right. So anything further, what's the pleasure of the council? Nancy? I didn't know, I just wanted to speak further.
I would like to make a motion. I move that the town, uh, the town council uh approved the withdrawal of up to one hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and two dollars for the purchase of two new vehicles, equipment that were included in the approved twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-eight capital improvement program.
Second.
By Nancy, Murphy, seconded by Nancy Harrington.
And authorize the town manager to sign all correspondence or. All necessary correspondence. Documentation.
Yep, very good. All right, uh, Nancy, would you like to speak further to your motion?
Nope, I think it's self-explanatory, thank you.
Any further discussions, see none? Call the question, all those in favor, the motion signified by saying aye, opposed or abstain, uh six zero zero.
Council, thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Uh, next on the agenda is uh Paul and Tom are going to present their uh, the town managers recommended two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Nope. Good, thank you.
Good evening. Come before the town council to present uh the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. With any budget that we've done over the last few years, we've always looked at the impact on the tax rate. And even though the voters do not vote on the revenue plan, there is an impact on revenues in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that affects the overall tax rate. Um, we have several increases to some revenues. Solid waste revenue, uh, we're projecting to go up about a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Entrance income, two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. We have a cops grant that is offset by expenses of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Uh miscellaneous revenue of forty-seven thousand one ninety-five. The bulk of that miscellaneous revenue is made up on, on one project, and you'll see that later on, there's an offsetting appropriation for that as well. And that's kind of the pay, uh paving of a church parking lot or the parking lot over by John O'Leary Adult Community Center. There are some decreases in the budget, current use, um, we figure that with the interest rates going up the way they're going up, uh, there's going to be a pullback on some of the building in town and some of the current use for properties that are in current use are going to be um a little bit longer. Uh, building permits, once again, we've had a large amount of building permits over the last few years. Uh, with the interest rates being where they are, we're, we're projecting that to be down around sixty-five thousand dollars from where we are. And then we have a state revenue sharing for New Hampshire retirement system for our police and firefighters. That is seven percent of the cost up to the town that we got reimbursed last year in the budget from uh the state. We do not know if that's going to be in the new budget because they are starting their budget process for their first year of their biennium when they return back from Christmas break in January and February. Um, years ago, that was uh sunset or um put off for a while. It used to be thirty percent, then it was down lower, 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 and then finally withdrawn from the budget. Um, once again, there's some talk that it might be a yearly event. Uh, once again, we won't know until they, the budget shakes out in uh, up in Concord. So our net increases to revenue is three hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. On the appropriation side, we have some uh increases, our health insurance was a guaranteed max of eleven point eight percent. Um, that's a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase. Uh, we believe that those, that number is uh going to be pretty close to the two hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase, so the eleven point eight percent max. Um, the reason being is that during COVID, uh, people didn't go and do procedures, things of that sort, really weren't going to the doctor unless they were really sick. Uh, we have seen a lot of the uh procedures that people are starting elective procedures, they're, they're going for them, so we have seen an increase where in prior years we did see a decrease. Um, dental, short-term unemployment has gone up a little bit. Workers' comp, even though we had a guaranteed max, has come down. We've been doing a lot better job with, with workers' compensation throughout the town. A general liability is going up a little bit. Uh, information technology budget is, is increasing by eighty-seven thousand dollars, and that's uh for a couple of things. We talked about this grant that we, we are getting, um, but uh we're looking to move to Office three sixty-five, and that's going to be a recurring cost. Uh, two-factor authen- authenticity uh with, with this. This is one of the things that came out of that study that we had, they said two-factor is better. I, I know a lot of people are using two-factor, a lot for their credit cards or their other, other insurances, things of that sort, so we're have to, we're implementing that. And then uh we're, we're upgrading our desk securities, um, which is uh Norton and, and, but it is Norton, but it's like a Norton security for our desktops, um, but it's, it's much more beefier product to help secure um the, the town's data and information. Sand and salts going up seven thousand dollars, solid waste tipping fees seventy-three thousand, recycling is, we're increasing to a hundred and fifty dollars a ton, and disposal is increasing to eighty-one dollars and eighty-five cents a ton. Uh, we've been talking, we're going to be back in front of the council, we've been talking to uh the gentlemen's at uh, at uh recycling. I know it's a large number, we really increased, however, the market is so vulnerable for the calendar year, we made money on recycling. All of a sudden, the market fell off. Is it going to come back? When's it going to come back? All those questions, we're putting in worst-case scenario at a hundred and fifty dollars a ton in the budget. Um, small increase in electric, water and sewer, natural gas, small increase there. We are in long-term contracts for both of the electric and natural gas. And as a matter of fact, we are in discussions to extend those contracts with our provider because of the weather we had in November and Janu- and December. Excuse me, and it's not just in the Northeast, but it's throughout the country. So there's some extra capacity in natural gas, and we can buy some futures to help us offset our thing. However, we were told that you're, we're at seven cents a kilowatt right now for electricity. Don't be surprised if you're going to be at ten cents. And that's, if you get it to ten cents, that's a great rate for two thousand twenty-five, which is three years from now.
Yeah, considering residential, twenty-two.
Yeah. So um vehicle fuel, ninety-nine thousand five hundred. Um, price of a gallon of gas is going down, three dollars and nineteen cents on average throughout the country. If you take in effect, uh, we don't pay federal tax, which is about forty cents, it's about two seventy-seven a gallon. Uh, we, at the current budget, we're at two, we'd be at two dollars and seventy-five cents. Um, we're looking at uh going out and, and securing some of those gallons for next year. However, because it's a twelve-month, they only do a twelve-month buy-ahead with, with gasoline contracts. We're still going to be halfway through our next budget cycle, but we're trying to secure some lower rates for our, our per price per gallon in gasoline and diesel. Uh, telephone maintenance, uh, we are Miteel phone system, uh, that's for a maintenance agreement as well as a contract. When we bought the system three years ago, we paid for all the maintenance upfront. We're in our fourth year in twenty-three, twenty-four, we have to pay for some maintenance going forward. Um, human resource uh software support, uh, we're moving to a new website for, that is specific for government um jobs. And we're looking to move where our applications are and how people apply for the jobs. We're trying to make it more computer side of the house than paper side of the house. Um, so that it's easier to move through and get people in and in the process a lot quicker. Um, the old way was you'd apply for a job on paper, they'd get copied. Once they're all copied, we'd send them out to departments, departments would look at them, and then send them back with who they want an interview or a list of who they want to interview. Now it's all, we, we're starting with a computerized system, it's not beefy enough for us. We're looking to improve this where that uh everything will be done via um the uh, the uh computer and make Sharon's life a lot easier, and we're also looking at onboarding through the computer instead of trying to send out packets and mail, mail packets for, with all the insurance in there, if we can put those online, and when somebody's hired, bring them right through the system that less, less people's hands touching it, it'll speed up the process, and there could be cost savings down the road to, for other items. Um, and then miscellaneous is ten thousand dollar increase. Um, now we're moving to the staffing or, or the personnel side of the house. Um, New Hampshire Retirement actually had a decrease, and believe it or not, the rates went down. Um, group one went from fourteen percent this year to thirteen and a half percent next year. Group two, which is fire, and uh went from thirty, almost thirty-three percent down to thirty point three, five percent. And police went from thirty-three point eight eight percent down to thirty-one point two eight percent. And roughly, it averages between a three point eight and an eight percent reduction in what the town will be paying for. Um, New Hampshire Retirement, and we're projecting a savings of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Compensated absence, that's that uh magical number that we have uh an accounting uh for people who are eligible to retire that haven't retired yet. Um, we're, we're dropping that a hundred thousand dollars this year due to the people, their age and, and where they sit on the retirement scheme from last year. Uh, we have union wages, we have uh Teamsters, NEBPA, we have two NEBA contracts, we have uh police officers and dispatchers and police office staff. Uh, those union wages are a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar increase. And then we have some o- related overtime for fire and police of forty-four thousand dollar increase. We have done some staffing changes, we have a police detective secretary that we uh have eliminated the position due to our new uh record management system. Um, so we were able to save seventy-one thousand dollars there. Um, we have the cops grant that I talked about, the revenue a hundred and twelve, here's your offsetting appropriation of a hundred and twelve. Um, Diane Trippett uh came forward and said the fifth clerk position at this time is not needed due to the amount of people who are utilizing, utilizing the computer system to get registrations. There hasn't been a lot of walk-in business, there's, there's walk-in business, but it isn't to the point where you need five people on the window um we're able to handle it. Um, she did put a big asterisk when she submitted her budget to me, saying she may ask for that position back in the future, but for next year, it's uh, she's, she said that it's a, a position that she really doesn't see if it's a need right now. Um, and then, of course, we talked a little bit a couple of weeks ago about the environmental director, deputy director for DPW, and that position upgrade is roughly about a forty thousand, including benefits. Those numbers for staffing are all fully loaded, that's not, we're not paying a police officer on the cost of that grant, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, that's a fully loaded uh cost with that. Um, and then employee incentive and raises, um, I'm asking for an increase of, of thirty thousand dollars to be um put in the budget, and that's because um, we have positions that are budgeted, and when people leave, sometimes when to get the people in, it's, it's, we have to, it's not what we're paying. We have to come up and pay a little bit more money, and, and the case in point is that um we hired a couple of people and uh we had to give them, you know, two, three thousand dollars more than what was in the budget, and that's where that money would come from, that, my employee incentive and raise line. Um, to help bring in highly qualified individuals into the town of Merrimack for employment. Um, that's, those uh increases total six hundred and eighty-five thousand one eleven. Um, now we're moving into the next section of budget, which is what I call uh construction needs. Um, town hall sprinklers, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, our town hall sprinklers are from um were installed in nineteen eighty, in the nineteen eighties. So they're getting a little long in the tooth. We have to do some renovations to them. Uh, sprinkler heads have changed over the years, things of that sort. We're having a lot more air um leaks in the system. Um, it's a dry system, but every now and then, you know, water gets into it. And as you know, with water and oxygen, it starts to rust the the pipe, and we get pinholes. Um, I'm sure the fire department's doing a happy dance that uh they won't have to be coming out here. And with this, once we get this project done to uh to upgrade some of this stuff, because uh they get alarms in there. Never, they're never during work hours. They're always, you know, at night, and then I get the phone call, and we come down and we go down to the uh to the sprinkle room, and that's what the problem is. There's a leak in the line, and then we have to call somebody in to fix it on uh on services. So we're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand there. Um, God bless you. Church parking lot, ninety-two thousand dollars. Most of that is going to be paid for by the church across the street as part of our lease agreement. All we have to really do is we have to pay for the section that we use for John O'Leary, which is the back parking lot of their church. The church has some other other aspects that they wanna use, like the driveway and some of the drive-throughs um with the paving company. But since it's our contract with the paving company, they will reimburse us and we'll we'll pay the bill, but they're paying for their share. All we have to do is pay for our share, and that's roughly about our debt-back portion portion of that parking lot only costs about forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars to pave that back portion of the lot, out of that ninety-two. Uh, police vehicles, uh prices, as the chief has said, have gone up. Uh, you heard the fire chief just a minute ago talk about going up, and and those are going up in the retro outfit for for them. And good old Ford, they changed specs just a little bit. So our cages don't fit, or our light bar doesn't fit, and we have to get different light bars and cages, so that's gone up a little bit. Updated uh fuel system um at the at the highway garage. Our system is is old. We knew it was old. When we did the um upgrade, we thought we'd have three to five years in it still. We still have the three, we're coming up on three to five years. We have to upgrade it. It's one point four million dollars. I have a solution to pay for that um that you'll see shortly. Um, and then paving, eight hundred thousand dollars. That's an increase to paving eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, as you know, we've been paying for the safer grant. Safer grant started in February two thousand twenty-two. It's gonna end roughly around March of twenty-five. We're in year two of it. We've been trying, instead of getting eight hundred thousand dollars on the rolls all at once in twenty-five, we've been putting money aside. Last year, we put money aside for the um eight hundred mega-hertz system. Seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred plus thousand. This year, we upped it to eight hundred thousand dollars, and we're gonna put that in paving. We're putting it in one-time cost. We're not putting it in recurring cost. So we're trying to get another eight hundred thousand dollars out of paving. Um, Brian, we talked about the Brian tank last meeting. Uh, solid waste office trailer, the floor's starting to rot out on that, that uh it's becoming a safety issue. And we're looking at it to replace that for about ninety-five thousand dollars. And then we have a computer software grade at code, the code enforcement. Um, as I talked about, with human resources being a paper-generated, code enforcement or our building inspectors are one hundred percent paper. So they go out to a job site, they write down on a piece of paper what's wrong or or what what's proved. They come back, it gets copied, it gets put into the system in a file, and then you have the file. What we're looking to do is looking to start move them to electronic. So they're out in the field with their tablets. They can just make the notes on their tablets. Now somebody doesn't have to grab that piece of paper when it comes back and file in the folder and make sure it gets put in the right file. For the next time, it will just be written in the tablet. Somebody comes in, asks, boom, they pull everything up on the screen. And uh it's gonna help with with the overall um building department and inspection time. Um, roughly, our total, it's not roughly, our total uh projected increases in capital is two million six hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred. Um, one point four million of that, though, is, well, two point two of that two point six million is in two items. The paving and the fuel pumps. Um, total general fund increase is three hundred, three million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, we also have some decreases to the budget. Uh, we have the communications, what I talked about, three, it was three sixty-three. Um, we have a drainage bond. We only have one bond left. We have a drainage bond that uh is coming off. Uh, a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. The only bond we have left is the highway garage, and I believe that expires in twenty thirty-seven. So we have a few more years on the highway garage, but we we reduced debt service by the drainage bond. Base radio system and highway thirty-two thousand five. Um, library materials, twenty-two thousand. July fourth, ten thousand. Heard from the Rotary that they're not doing the midway fund day. So if they're not gonna do it, we said, Matt, Kispares, and I talked and said, let's get it out of the budget if if they're not gonna do it. Um, because at this time, Matt doesn't think that he has the staff or or um to do it. So I've said, if we're not gonna do it, we should just remove it from the budget. Um, and then Wassman Cabinet roofs, about a million dollars worth reductions in the budget. Net total general fund increase is two million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand five twenty-five. Um, I wanna show you where we stand with fund balance. Um, if you look at the year two thousand one, two thousand twenty-two actual, uh, we ended up putting about one point nine million dollars back into fund balance. Um, we did our reductions of one million six hundred and fifty. We're at eight million nine seventy-nine, or nine point two four percent.
Good boy. Boy. I'm reserve fund balance, boy.
Beginning of year, okay.
Nope, it's all right. I'd never seen it before.
Neither have I. I'm glad he was here. Um, and if you look, we take that eight point nine million dollars, and we have estimated one point three million dollars coming off. We'll be at seven point six million or seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, we're looking at seven point eight five percent, looking at twenty-three, twenty-four, using two point one million dollars. What I what I'm suggesting to the council is that that fuel distribution center come out of the capital, it's come out of the fund balance so that it doesn't affect the tax rate for that big chunk of money. Um, and that'll bring us down where where the council really would like to be, around six percent. I did not put in here money going in. I know that we're not gonna have take money out um the way twenty-two, twenty-three, it's awful early, but there is gonna be some surplus going in. Um, especially with uh the way interest revenues are coming through right now. And there's a couple of other items that uh I'm hoping that we get down the road that uh it's been talked about through federal government and uh some grants to help offset some of the items that we have purchased. So um I do see that fund balance number being higher than the seven point six million at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, so we're gonna be right, or I would say we're gonna be around six percent after twenty-three, twenty-four, those are my estimates. So that's why I'm saying that that one point four million is coming out, and it's not going to affect the tax rate by using fund balance on that. So these are the fund charts that uh the previous town manager had developed um to keep things straight in everybody's mind. You have uh the pink is capital reserve fund deposits. Uh, other capital is is an orange. Uh, purple is a road sidewalk infrastructure improvement, and then the green is the safer grant. And we break it out, because what we want trying to do with these slides is compare operating money to operating money. Capitals to capital down the road, because I could say my budget decreased six million dollars and ten million dollars of that would be a the bond that we got for wastewater last year. And it doesn't show the complete picture. So that's how we're trying, and that's what these sheets are for, the next few slides, is to show you what operating budget would be. So right now for general fund, it's a thirty-two million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollar budget all in, meaning capital reserve funds, other capitals, sidewalks, and then the safer grant. If you back out the 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 four columns, it's twenty-eight million, it's a twenty-eight million dollar budget. And then we have the self-supporting funds, which are fire protection, outside details, library, trustee of trust fund money, fire outside detail, media, which we get the cable franchise fees for, wastewater, which is uh enterprise fund, and then wastewater debt. All those are offset by corresponding revenues. So if you look at the appropriations, the appropriations operating funds for the town, which are salaries, office supplies, everything but some major capital that we break out is a four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar increase or one point six nine percent. Um, what I did this year is I flatlined capital reserve fund deposits. Um, we will have enough money in the capital refund reserves to pay. I know that uh uh that will take our balance down a little bit by flatlining it. But uh everything we need to do, we should be able to do by flatlining the capital reserve fund deposits. Um, other capital, you'll see a big increase of a million dollars. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for town sprinklers, the church parking lot, ninety-two thousand dollars. One point four million dollars we just talked about for the uh fire, uh not the fire, the gas, gas pumps at highway. Uh, ninety-five thousand dollars for an office trailer, and then the seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for the eight hundred mega-hertz system comes up to about a million dollars. Um, these are projects that are very much needed for the town. It's not something, it's not a, it's it's a need, not a want. These projects are needed, the especially in the sprinklers and and the uh fuel pumps um and the trailer. Uh, increasing road infrastructure, eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's for the paving. Um, and then the safer grant goes up about six thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars. General fund totals increased two million, two hundred and eighty-nine, five twenty-five, or roughly seven point three percent when everything's said and done. Um, here's what I talked a little bit about, the capital reserve funds. As you'll see, we're estimating at the end of twenty-three, June of twenty-three, about four point three million dollars. Um, we're gonna put the one point nine, almost two million back in. We'll be at six point two before projects. Next slide. We're looking at about two point five million dollars in capital reserve fund projects. Um, so that will bring that down to roughly um three point seven million dollars in capital fund deposits at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, go back a slide. And some of those projects that we're looking at doing next year are uh a storage upgrade for our uh storage files and IT, ninety thousand dollars. Um, an ambulance um for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, one-ton dump trucks, three, one-ton dump trucks, a pickup truck. Um, and then paving Greeley Street from Greeley Street to Bedford Road. Uh, Penn and Chuck Pump Station is is an improvement that we're looking to do in wastewater as well as buying a another loader. So some of those, those are the things that are coming through that you'll see next year in the capital reserve funds that uh that we that will be coming before the council to ask for permission in twenty-three, twenty-four. Finley, you're set?
I'm all set, yep. Thanks. Sorry.
I didn't wanna change it if you're still looking.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I was ready to, but I'm good.
Um, so on, we're we're looking at the self-supporting funds. And like I told you, we had a big wastewater bond of uh ten million, one hundred thousand dollars. Um, overall, the fund, it's down the nine million eight hundred and seventy-eight, but if you take that ten million out, it's up about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. If you take out the grand fund totals, it will be roughly around two point five, two point six million dollars um increase. Now, the rest of the story. Questions? Okay, didn't know if there was a question. So looking at the tax rate. Uh, general fund operating, which we saw was about twenty-eight million, capital reserve fund deposits, other capital, road infrastructure, total budget about forty-one point two million dollars. Of that forty-one point two million dollars, twenty-one point seven million dollars is coming back in revenues. Um, we are increasing the townwide value for the construction that is happening uh that we're projecting as of April first, two thousand twenty-three, to be twenty-four million dollars. Um, overall tax rate estimated to be twenty-one cents. Came before you, I believe, in October, and I said roughly twenty-one cents would be the increase. Um, through diligent work of the departments and uh finance department uh going through the budget and looking at items, we're at the twenty-one cents that we we said that in October we'd come in at. Uh, couple of things here that of note, that I'd like the council to know and the people of Merrimack to know is that uh what are pending items or the state budget is in the first year of the biannual budget. Um, anything can happen with revenues. Rooms and meals and highway block grant, especially since highway block grant is tied to um the gas tax. Uh, non-union raises are not included in this. I have three unions that are out of contract that will have separate warrant articles if they all ratify. Um, one is uh Ask Me Thirty-Six Fifty-Seven, which is our fire supervisors and police supervisors um and communication supervisor. Um, our twenty-nine eighty-six group from Ask Me, American Federation State County Municipal Employees. The uh two-nine-eight-six is the DPW laborers. That's the gentleman who plow your roads. That's the people who work at wastewater. That's your transfer station, uh individuals up at the transfer station. And IAFF, which is the uh firefighters union, um which are your paramedics and firefighters. And of course, the magical bullet there that none of us know is the inflation. Um, what I've been hearing is that uh twenty-three and possibly beginning of twenty-four, um, the economy, they're trying to slow the economy slowly. That's why they raised the interest rates point five or or fifty basis points instead of seventy-five basis points um to try to slow it in a in a slowed fashion. They still think the economy is is uh is strong. Um, and I don't know what that's gonna do for product or inflation of uh imports and exports. So there's still that uh pending item is the inflationary item on this stuff. Uh, but however, we, I I feel this is a very good budget, comprehensive budget. It uh it is the, I think it meets the needs of the the community while trying to adhere to 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 the needs of the community as well. Um, there are some things that uh we definitely need to do, like I said. Looking at the sprinkle systems, which are which are built in the nineteen eighties from in some of these buildings. We've been having some serious leaks um in air in the pinhole layers. And and we're fortunate enough that we were able to catch some of the leaks before they became full outright. Let it let them water out and 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 ruining files. And that's the other thing we're trying to do is is get some of these files on on a computer basis so that if we're not so much paper-reliant, we're more of a computer-reliant, uh so we can get the information. Um, I wanna talk about the tax rate. This is uh, this is how your two thousand twenty-two tax bill is broken out. The red is the school, the blue is the municipality, the green is the county. The county's about five percent, the municipality's about twenty-two percent. The school makes up the rest. Um, our average value, uh assessed value for a home in Merrimack now is three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars. It's about six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollar taxes. This is how your tax dollars broken out. Of that six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, one thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars goes to the municipality. That pays for police, fire, DPW, town clerk, tax collector, assessing community development, solid waste. That's all included in the municipality portion of it. Um, the county is five point six percent, and then the school is seventy-two point seven three percent of that bill. Questions? I know January, we're gonna have some meetings scheduled um to talk about this individually. The departments uh departments will be here to answer all the questions for the council. Um, and like I said, I I couldn't have brought this budget into where it was without the help of of the departments. Um, we met a couple of times, and they really stepped up to the plate and uh really presented a a need-based budget.
Great. Thank you, Paul. It's a habit that was established now, two thousand six. Ever since they've, you know, the departments have come in pretty snug. Yeah, it's been my experience.
I agree.
Does anybody have any questions or thoughts? Barbara, I'm sorry, you did say that a minute ago.
So, question for you. Um, with all the building that's been taking place in town, have we seen an increase in the taxes coming in for the property taxes?
Um, we have included last year, our value went up a hundred and thirty-two million dollars.
Okay.
So that helped offset the tax rate to the residents of Merrimack uh because um Because quick math is is your appropriations minus your revenues divided by your value. If the value goes up, the number for taxes is is lower, and that's why we were able to increase the taxes from seventeen, tax rate from seventeen seventeen to seventeen thirty-eight is because of all that additional building.
So that like falls into the bucket where the towns were.
Yes, the value, the overall value of the town, and that's why we're increasing twenty-four. So indirectly, yes, we have received more tax dollars by by increasing our value because now we have a bigger value base to pay for the budget. You're able to spread it over, instead of spreading it over three people, now you're able to spread that the tax bill or the whatever your appropriation number is. In this case, for what I'm projecting in
Twenty-four million?
Twen, go down one. I'm projecting about a twenty million dollar. Nineteen million, four hundred and eighteen thousand, seven twenty-four, which I had to raise by taxes last year or this December bill, was spread over that many more people, and that's what kept our rate at three dollars and eighty-six cents. Next year, it's twenty-four million will be spread over twenty million, eight, eight, six hundred and thirty thousand will be spread over additional people to keep the rate down to four dollars and seven cents or a twenty-one cent increase. So in in essence, yes, they are helping keep the rates low.
It's into the equation. All right. Are we gonna be getting thumb drives?
I don't know what you're getting. I hate to, I hate to say that, that's that's Tom's bucket now.
It would be nice if we had some control over these monitors here, but I get it, maybe you can't do that.
Everything's possible, just takes money with these.
He comes off the budget presentation, talking more money.
No, honestly, it's, we would need to do some upgrades. You know, we're running it off of a laptop right here, and that's, you're basically, we're just projecting what's on here from the laptop, so it's just a dummy screen to get it where you'd have some individuals, there's gotta be some talking and
Can a laptop be connected?
These are just screens.
Those are just dummy screens.
So the actual computer is
Yeah, the the computer's right here and it it projects.
Could I tie my laptop into this screen?
Anything's possible. I don't know, did Jonathan leave, did he run out of here? Jonathan left?
Because I even like my budget electronically, I was the last guy to get a smartphone in this whole crew, and which was years ago now.
I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be, I'll have Jonathan look into that.
I don't want it to be an expense.
It's not gonna be an expense, it might be, it might be a cord we have down in IT that we have that you just have to connect it in. But you should, might be, you should be able to, we just gotta see if, how that's gonna play out. But we'll, we'll make it work without an expense.
So we do have a budget book as as you've gotten in the past, hard copy, and then I do have the the budget file on a on a flash drive for each one of you as well.
Both ways.
Freeze frame?
And I froze all of the frames.
He never did, I always had to ask him, so. You're awesome, I appreciate it.
I wouldn't even know what that is.
I do want to mention one thing. The way February falls this year, I want to mention a couple of important dates. The way February falls this year, it's the meeting dates, we have, you have that? So, thank you. February ninth is a regular council meeting because February first is a Wednesday, February second is the first Thursday of the month. However, February fourteenth is the last day for petition warrant articles and ratification of union contracts. We usually don't hold our public hearing until all that is completed. So that would mean that we'd hold a meeting on February sixteenth. So in February, we'd go February ninth, February sixteenth, and then February twenty-third would be another regular council meeting. What I would recommend is that depending on how much information or how much where we are in in some of the the items, and if we do, we either cancel the February ninth meeting or then make it the February sixteenth meeting, or cancel the February twenty-third meeting and make it the February sixteen meeting. So we're not meeting three Thursdays in a row, and one Thursday would just be for the budget, we just
And we will just finished all the Thursdays in January.
Yes, yes. So, and then the other thing The other thing is that because of that, moving out to February sixteenth, hopefully January won't be snowy, but if we get snow and we have to cancel some meetings, that gives us a little bit of a a little buffer, so to speak. The other, I just want to make these couple of dates so people under know is that February tenth is the last day to file petition bonds over a hundred thousand dollars. That's the Friday, that's a Friday, that's the last day you can file a petition bond. February fourteenth, like I said, is the last day, not, not, yeah, February fourteenth, Tuesday is the last day to file petition warrant articles and ratification of tentative agreements with unions. Because of the way March falls, our deliberation's gonna be a little, little bit later than normal. Our deliberative session will be March fifteenth, which is the third Wednesday, but it follows the second Tuesday of March. Our charter states that our deliberative session has to fall between the second Tuesday in March and the following Saturday. So it'll be on the Wednesday, which will be February fifteenth, which would be the third Wednesday of the month. March fifteenth, yes, March fifteenth, which would be the third, but that would be the deliberative session. And then the final ballot is April eleventh. So that will be voting day in the town of Merrimack will be Tuesday, April eleventh. But I do want to just say if anybody has any petition warrant articles they're thinking about or petition bonds, you can run the language by Tom, myself. You know, this way it is, we don't get to the situation where we have to correct things later on, so.
Do you need a decision about the February dates?
No, we can put that, we can, we can talk about that as we get closer. Like I said, there's some stuff that's coming up in the the legislation last year updated the veteran credit language. I have to bring the ordinance back to the town council to get that language basically readopted, because if we don't readopt the five hundred dollar veteran credit, reverts back to fifty dollars. But since it's an ordinance, I need three readings. So it all depends where we are in the process, I'm hoping to bring that for January, two readings in January, and then we'd have the final one in February, whether it'll be the February, which day in February we go to. So, and I don't know what other items might be coming up that the town council would have to act upon in that timeframe. So I would, I would suggest we're definitely in January, we can, we can talk about which one we want to cancel, and we'll have that discussion in public. And I know that everybody likes their Christmas gift of the budget book and the flash drive, so there'll be a quiz, January fifth.
Are you done? All right, does anybody have anything? Something like that or ask? All right. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate everybody being here.
And of course, if you have any questions about information, we have included.
We have included the budget schedule in the books in the front with the dates, January fifth is our first one. If you're reviewing the budget and you have questions and you want to get them to me, so I can get them to the department so they can have those answers for you when you read it, so.
Are we getting the books tonight? Well, that's depressing.
Thanks, everybody.
I'm sorry, I don't have room in my car.
The what? Oh, yeah. All right, let's get this wrapped up here.
Merry Christmas to us.
Minutes, we have the town of Merrimack goal setting summary dated June eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
We have to
You have to accept them?
Okay.
Isn't that, that's what we've done, right? What are you doing with this?
Yes, I am.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve the minutes from the Merrimack goal setting summary, June eighth, two thousand twenty-two, as presented.
A motion by Andy, seconded by Barbara. Any further discussion on those goals? See none, call the question, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. November seventeenth minutes, November seventeen, two thousand twenty-two.
Move to accept the minutes as written.
Motion by Barbara.
Second.
Second by Nancy, is there any adjustments? See none, call the question. All those in favor of the minutes for November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch you seconded that.
And then December first, two thousand twenty-two minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Andy. Seconded by Barbara. Any adjustments or comments? See none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, minutes of December first, two thousand twenty-two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Comments from the press, see none, comments from the public, see none, comments from the council. Barbara?
Go ahead. I'd just like to wish everyone out there a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year.
Thank you, everybody here.
And ditto.
Juan? Andy?
I'd just like to tell Paul, I appreciate you bringing up the school bus issue. I know that it's been a topic of contentions with quite a few people in the community lately, and I appreciate you bringing that up and and working with the school district and the police department to to try to put that issue to bed and and make it as safe as possible for the children in the community, so thank you.
Juan?
Yeah, I'd like to wish everybody out there a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, whatever they celebrate, certainly the council, the staff. And I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Juan, seconded by Barbara, sorry Nancy, gotta be very quick. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Thank you, everybody.